In case of emergency, this is the Plenary Hall exit plan. This is the Plenary Hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and may request the Secretary General to read the title of the bills.
Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I reiterate my motion, I move that we take up additional reference of business and may request the Secretary General to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Session suspended.
Where they sitting? I don't know.
Session is resumed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Rules as Deputy Majority Leader Representative Eduardo R. Rama, as Assistant Majority Leader Antonio B. Romano III, Ricardo S. Cruz Jr., Wilfredo Arman R. Di Magila Jr. Is a move.
Is there any objection? Said motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the following committees. As to the Committee on Agriculture and Food as Chairperson, Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga; to the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources as Chairperson, Suoyoshi Anthony J. Joribata; to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries as Chairperson, Irwin C. Tien; to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture as Chairperson, Romanti Romulo; to the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation, Laurni Lavinroque; to the Committee on Climate Change as Chairperson, Anyela Bianca D. Tolentino; to the Committee on Constitutional Amendments as Chairperson, Rufus B. Rodriguez; to the Committee on Cooperatives Development as Chairperson, Felimon M. Espares; to the Committee on Economic Affairs as Chairperson, Antonio B. Legarda Jr.; to the Committee on Energy as Chairperson, Jose C. Álvarez; to the Committee on Foreign Affairs as Chairperson, Maria Rachel J. Arenas; to the Committee on Games and Amusements as Chairperson, Antonio A. Ferrer; to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education as Chairperson, Jude A. Asidre; to the Committee on Housing and Urban Development as Chairperson, Victoria Co. Pilar; to the Committee on Information and Communications Technology as Chairperson, Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte; to the Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy as Chairperson, Georgina P. de Venesia; to the Committee on Justice as Chairperson, Jervil Jinky-Bitrix R. Luistro; to the Committee on Labor Unemployment as Chairperson, Ramon Jolo B. Revilia III; to the Committee on Legislative Franchises as Chairperson, Jeffrey P. Ferrer; to the Committee on Metro Manila Development as Chairperson, Dean Asistio; to the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development as Chairperson, Leodi F. Tariela; to the Committee on National Defense and Security as Chairperson, Oscar G. Malapitan; to the Committee on Natural Resources as Chairperson, Alfredo D. Maranyon III; to the Committee on North Luzon Growth Quadrangle as Chairperson, Angelo Marcos Barba; to the Committee on Public Works and Highways as Chairperson, Romeo S. Momos Sr.; to the Committee on the Revision of Laws as Chairperson, Emidio P. Tanwatko III; to the Committee on Rural Development as Chairperson, Wilton Tonton T. Cole; to the Committee on Science and Technology as Chairperson, Julio A. Ledesma IV; to the Committee on Tourism as Chairperson, Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona; to the Committee on Trade and Industry as Chairperson, Maximo Y. Dalug Jr.; to the Committee on Transportation as Chairperson, Franz S. Pumarin; to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, Faustino Michael Carlos T. D.; to the Special Committee on Creative Industries as Chairperson, Javier Miguel López Benítez. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to elect the honorable members from the various committees and their various memberships, is there any objection? Chair's stand, said motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Representative Kaka J. Bagao of the Lone District of Dinagat Islands. They are delegation of barangay officials from the province of the Dinagat Islands. Honorable JP Bagao, Honorable Romeo Genghis Can Vargas, Honorable El Mihoan Arana, Honorable Evangelion Victoriano, Honorable Lovely Fe Bacolod, Honorable Jaime Solina, Honorable Marieto Gahel Lyoma, Honorable Pedro Olaco, Honorable Wilma Jella, Honorable Divine E. Yupenya, Ms. Early Herona Serona, Mr. Edvin Evalye, Ms. Merrill Grace Torbales, Mr. Eduardo Roma, Ms. Anne Berly Andam, Mr. Diomedes Torbales, Ms. Sheila Jane Pegaro, Ms. Marine Fidelis, Mr. Nilo Linaga, Honorable Joven Lapore, Honorable Mark Cuevas, and Honorable Angel Saberon.
To the guests of the Honorable Congresswoman Kaka Bagao of the Lone District of Dinagat Islands, welcome to the House of the People, the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and may request the Secretary General to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? Secretary General.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading. House Bill 1301, Creating a Comprehensive Policy Enabling Youth Participation in Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1302, Establishing a Multi-Species Marine Hatchery in Gandara Samar by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Agriculture.
House Bill 1303, Providing for the Creation of a Hospital in Gandara Samar to be known as the Gandara District Hospital by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 1304, Establishing an Integrated School in of Gandara Samar to be known as Gandara Integrated School by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1305, Strengthening the Filipino Youth Involvement in Agriculture and Entrepreneurship by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1306, Establishing Malaho Bridge to Reef Adventure Trail in Talbayog Samar on Ecotourism Site by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1307, Providing for the Modernization of Matuginao Rural Health Unit into a Super Health Center in Matuginao Samar by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 1308, Declaring Pinipisakan Falls Located in San Jorge Samar as an Ecotourism Site by Representative Tan Stephen James.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1309, Declaring the Tarangbangan Falls in Talbayog Samar in an Ecotourism Site by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1310, Establishing Tourism Circuits in the First District of Samar by Representative Tan Stephen James.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1311, Preserving the Indigenous Games of the Philippines by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1312, Providing a Comprehensive renal Replacement Therapy for Patients with End-Stage Renal Disease in National, Regional, and Provincial Government Hospitals by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1313, Reducing Food Waste through Food Donations and Food Waste Recycling by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
The Committee on, the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 1314, Granting Additional Privileges to Persons with Disabilities by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1315, Providing the Privatization and Corporization of Public Hospitals, Public Health Facilities, and Public Health Services by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 1316, Strengthening the Administration of Excise Tax on Tobacco Products, Cigar, Cigarettes, Heated Tobacco Products, Vapor Products, and Novell Tobacco Products by Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1317, Establishing in the Second District, City of Marikina, the Tumana National Elementary School by Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1318, Encouraging Corporate Social Responsibility by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1319, Allowing and Regulating the Use of Motorcycle as PUVs by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1320, Providing for the Revised Warehouse Receipts Law of the Philippines by Representative Premisia Sagabas.
The Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1321, Providing for the Magna Carta of the Out-of-School Youth by Representative Premisa Sagabas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1322, Lowering the Optional Retirement Age of Public School Teachers From 60 Years Old to 55 Years Old by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 1323, Strengthening the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1324, Requiring Parents to Plant Two Trees for Every Child Born to Them by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
The Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 1325, Requiring All Graduating Elementary, High School, and College Students to Plant at Least Ten Trees Each as Per Requisite for Graduation by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
The Special Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 1326, Providing Civil Service Eligibility and Permanent Appointment to All Government Cashwell and Contractual Employees Under Job Orders, Contract of Service Memorandum of Agreement, and Other Similar Contracts by Representatives Rivilia Ramonjolo, Mercado Rivilia, and Rivilia Bryan.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1327, Establishing in the City of Cavite, Province of Cavite, the Cavite National Science High School by Representatives Rivilia Ramonjolo, Mercado Rivilia, and Rivilia Bryan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1328, Converting the Extension Campus of the Cavite State University in the City of Cavite, Province of Cavite into a Regular Campus by Representatives Rivilia Ramonjolo, Mercado Rivilia, and Rivilia Bryan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1329, Accepting Migrant Workers from the Payment of Premium Contributions to the Field Health by Representatives Rivilia Ramonjolo, Mercado Rivilia, and Rivilia Bryan.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 1330, Strengthening the Regulatory Powers of the NFA to Support the Rice Industry by Representatives Rivilia Ramonjolo, Mercado Rivilia, and Rivilia Bryan.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1331, Establishing the Sangdepois Special Economic Zone Authority in the City of Cavite, Province of Cavite by Representatives Rivilia Ramonjolo, Mercado Rivilia, and Rivilia Bryan.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1332, Providing for the Magna Carta of BHWs by Representative Romolo.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1333, Strengthening the Cybercrime Prevention Measures by Representative Romolo.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1334, Expanding the Registration and Assurance of Licenses in the Pasay District Office of the LTO by Representative Romolo.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1335, Modifying and Expanding the Composition of the Board of the National Commission for Culture and the Arts, Mandating the Establishment and Operation of Cultural Facilities and Regional Officers Thereof by Representative Romolo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1336, Instituting the Charter of the National Library of the Philippines by Representative Romolo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1337, Creating a National Urban Agricultural Program, Establishing an Urban Agriculture Promotion Fund by Representative Nazal.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1338, Enhancing the Competitiveness of Philippine Maritime Trade and Institutionalizing Mechanisms for the Efficient Movement of Goods by Representative Nazal.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1339, Establishing the Pili Industry Subsidy Fund by Representative Lagman.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1340, Protecting the Physical Integrity of a Cultural Property from Adverse Visual Impact and Penalizing Any Obstruction of Its View and Sightline by Representative Lagman.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1341, Amending the Philippine Identification System Act by Representatives Soan.
To the Committee on...
Population, sir.
Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 1342, Penalizing Smishing or SMS Text Cams and Imposing Duties on Public Telecommunications Entities by Representatives Soan.
The Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1343, Establishing a System Protecting the Community Intellectual Rights of Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples by Representatives Soan.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples.
House Bill 1344, Integrating a Foundation of Computer Programming Curriculum for Grade Schools and Junior High Schools by Representatives Soan.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1345, Reclassifying a Purcell of Land of Public Domain Located in Macanhan, Carmen, Cagendio, Oro City, from Timberland to Alienable and Disposable Land by Representatives Soan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1346, Granting Free Funeral Services to Poor Families by Representatives Soan.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 1347, Renaming the Veterans Memorial Medical Center Located in Dilimanqueso City to Veterans Medical Center by Representatives Soan.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1348, Safeguarding and Protecting Scholars from Politization, Improper Influence and Abuses in Scholarship Grants or Programs by Representatives Soan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1349, Institutionalizing the Establishment of Schools of Living Traditions for Indigenous Cultural Communities as Part of the Basic Education System by Representatives Soan.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1350, Establishing Veterans Medical Centers in Luzon, Visayas, and Mindanao by Representatives Soan.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1351, Regulating Online Gambling in the Philippines by Representatives Diokno, Sendanya, Ismula, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 1352, Strengthening the Prevention of Bullying in Elementary and Secondary Schools by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1353, Providing for the Magna Carta of BHWs by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1354, Creating the Philippine Centers for Disease Prevention and Control by Representative Abalos.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1355, Granting appropriate Civil Service Eligibility to Contractual, Temporary, and Co-Terminous Government Employees under Certain Conditions by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1356, Creating the Department of Disaster Resilience by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience and the Committee on Governmentary Organization.
House Bill 1357, Providing for Early Voting by Qualified Senior Citizens, PWDs, Lawyers, and Human Resources for Health in National and Local Elections by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee...
Suffrage.
On Suffrage.
House Bill 1358, Institutionalizing the Transition of the Government to E-Governance in the Digital Age by Representative Abalos.
Wala, wala dito eh. To the Committee on... Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1359, Providing for Validity Periods of Identification Cards Issued to PWDs by Representative Abalos.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1360, Establishing the National Cancer Center of the Philippines by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 1361, Certain the Mental Health Services of State Universities and Colleges by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1362, Establishing a National Program for the Acquisition, Deployment, and Integration of Military-Grad Unmanned Aerial Systems by Representative Villia Fuerte Vicencio Renato Luigi.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 1363, Mandating the Rehabilitation, Refurbishment, and Recommissioning of Decommissioned Military Helicopters and Aircraft by Representative Villia Fuerte Vicencio Renato Luigi.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 1364, Accepting Generic and Branded Medicine Sales from Value Added Tax by Representative Tevis.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1365, Mandating the Inclusion of the Professional or Doctor's Fees in One Hospital Bill and in the Coverage of Medical Assistance to Indigent and Financially Incapacitated Patients Program of the DOH by Representative Tevis.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1366, Mandating the Field Health to Cover All Essential Maternity Care Related Expenses of Indigent and Financially Incapacitated Patients by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1367, Creating Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement Team under the DOH by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1368, Providing for Cheaper and More Accessible Internet for All by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1369, Institutionalizing the Gulayan sa barangay at paaralan program by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1370, Creating Typhoon Resiliency Plans for Public School Buildings by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Disaster and Resilience.
House Bill 1371, Providing for a 200 Pesos Daily Wage Increase for Minimum Wage Workers in the Private Sector by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1372, Including Disaster Preparedness and Response Subject as Part of the Curriculum in Public and Private High Schools by Representative Tevis.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 1373, Establishing a Halal Food and Drug Administration by Representative Adyong.
To the Committee on Muslim Affairs.
House Bill 1374, Amending RA 7875, National Health Insurance Act of 1995 by Representative Adyong.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1375, Providing for the Development of Sustainable Cities and Communities in the Country by Representative Adyong.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1376, Further Amending RA 11213 or the Tax Amnesty Act by Representative Adyong.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1377, Enhancing the Discount on the Purchase of Goods and Services of Senior Citizens and PWDs by Representative Adyong.
To the Committee on Ways and Means, the Committee on Senior Citizens, and the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1378, Providing Better Services to Muslim Filipino Pilgrims through Privatization of the Annual Hajj Pilgrimage by Representative Adyong.
The Committee on Muslim Affairs.
House Bill 1379, Strengthening the Establishment and Operation of All Public and Private Higher Education Institutions by Representative Adyong.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1380, Declaring the Universal Healthcare by Representatives Tan, Keith, Maika, and Montez.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1388, Including Personal Financial Literacy Course in the Technical Vocational Education and Training Curriculum of Technical Vocational Institutions and Testa Training Centers by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1389, Providing Indigent Jobseekers Discounted or Waived Fees and Charges in the issuance of Certain Pre-Employment Documents issued by Government Agencies by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 1390, Mandating Testa to Design and Implement Technical Vocational Education and Training and Livelihood Programs Specifically for Rehabilitated Drug Dependents by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1391, Amending Article 55 of the Family Code of the Philippines by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1392, Ensuring the Fundamental Equality of Men and Women Under the Laws on Marriage and Family Relations by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 1393, Providing Protection for Children Using the Internet by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1394, Defining Electronic Violence Against Women and Their Children by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 1395, Creating One Additional Branch of the Family Court and One Additional Branch of RTC in the First Judicial Region to be Stationed in Kabugaw Ilokasur by Representative Sing Son Ronald.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1396, Establishing in Mountain Province the Ched Mountain Province Satellite Office by Representative Dalug.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1397, Mandating the Provision of Comprehensive Renal Replacement Therapy to Patient with End-Stage Renal Disease, Increasing for the Purpose the Field Health Package Rate for Members by Representative Dalug.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1398, Authorizing the DOH to Set and Approve the Bed Capacity and Service Capability of All DOH-Retained Hospitals by Representative Dalug.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1399, Establishing a Testa Training and Assessment Center in Patasiles, Mountain Province by Representative Dalug.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1400, Protecting the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and Indigenous Cultural Communities Affected by Renewable Energy Investments in Their Ancestral Lands by Representative Dalug.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples and the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 1401, Establishing the Doña Remedios Trinidad Agro-Industrial Economic Zone Act of 2025 by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1402, Declaring the Immediate Environs of Quiapo Church, Plaza Miranda San, Sebastian Church, Plaza del Carmen, Quezon Bridge, the Life Theater, or Old Vilionco Building, and Other Built Heritage with Notable Historical and Cultural Significance as National Heritage Zones by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1403, Mandating All Power Telecommunication Cable and Internet Providers to Dangling Wires and Clear Non-Operational Overhead Wires and Cables by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1404, Expanding the Coverage of the Senior Citizen Social Pension to Include Non-Indigence and Granting Additional Privileges by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1405, Providing for the Revised Animal Welfare Act of the Philippines by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1406, Establishing the Provincial Sealing Bank in Ormooclete by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1407, Requiring the Installation of AED in High Traffic Cardic Emergency-Proned Public and Private Buildings by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1408, Mandating All Vehicle Operators to Turn On Headlights and Taillights at All Times of the Day When the Engine Is Turned On and Running by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1409, Establishing the Ormooc City Heart Center by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1410, Establishing the Ormooc City Kidney Center by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1411, Providing for a Lump Sum End-of-Term Pay to All barangay Officials Equivalent to One-Year Honorarium by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1412, Establishing the National Police Clearance System by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1413, Establishing the Philippine Forensic DNA Database by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1414, Declaring November 17 of Every Year as Arrow ng Carmen, a Special Non-Working Holiday in Carmen Surigao del Sur by Representative Momo.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1415, Providing for the Manner of Selection of the Acting President and Acting Vice President when Vacancy Occurs in the Positions of President, Vice President, President-Elect and Vice President-Elect by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1416, Providing for the Administrative Cancellation of Birth Certificates Registered through Fraudulent Means by Foreign Nationals by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 1417, Regulating the Allocation and Utilization of Confidential and Intelligence Funds by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 1418, Regulating Special Disbursing Officers and Imposing Penalties for Misuse and Misappropriation of Funds by Representative Chua.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1419, Establishing Marikina Polytechnic College as the National Technical Vocational Education and Training University by Representative Kimbo.
The Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education.
House Bill 1420, Prescribing a Maximum Margin of Preference for Philippine Products and Services in Government Procurement by Representative Kimbo.
The Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1421, Granting Universal Social Pension to Senior Citizens by Representative Kimbo.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1422, Establishing in Tumana, Marikina, the Tumana National High School by Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1423, Institutionalizing a 6% Budgetary Allocation of Barangays for the Implementation of Programs, Projects, Activities, and Services for Senior Citizens, PWDs, and Solo Parents by Representative Kimbo.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1424, Establishing a Regulatory Framework for the Registration and Accountability of Large-Scale Online Platforms by Representative Kimbo.
The Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1425, Institutionalizing the Assistance to Individuals in Crisis Situation Program by Representative Kimbo.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1426, Providing for the Magna Carta of barangay health workers by Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on... Local Government.
House Bill 1427, Establishing a Special Economic Zone in Marikina, creating the Marikina Special Economic Zone Authority by Representative Kimbo.
Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1428, Giving Tax Incentives to Physicians Reddering Probono Services to Indigent Patients by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1429, Providing for a 200 Pesos Daily Wage Increase for Minimum Wage Workers in the Private Sector by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1430, Creating a DPWH Regional Office Barn and Five New District Engineering Offices Thereunder by Representative Momo.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1438, Providing for Free Breast Cancer Screening and Affordable Treatment of Breast Cancer for Filipino Women by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 1439, Encouraging New Lawyer Scholars to Provide Free Legal Services to OFWs under the Department of Migrant Workers by Representative Turantino.
To the Committee on... Overseas Worker Affairs.
House Bill 1440... Institutionalizing a National Telemedicine System in the Philippines by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1441, Promoting and Developing Fiber Derived from Philippine Pineapples for Fashion and Clothing by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1442, Allowing Medical and Health Personnel in Government Service to Retire at the Age of 56 Years Old by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1443, Strengthening and Expanding the Coverage of the Telecommuting Act by Representative Turantino.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 144, Promoting the Welfare and Adoption of Stray and Impounded Animals, Providing Incentives Therefore by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1445, Granting Philippine Citizenship to Andres Miguel... House Bill 1445, granting Philippine citizenship to Andres Miguel Soriano de Forth by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1446, to amend Article 320 on destructive arson of the revised Penal Code by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1447, declaring September 7th of every year as a special working holiday in Maragundon Cavite to be known as Emiliano Riego de Dios Day by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1448, mandating the payment of hazard pay to all judges of the Courts of the Philippines by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1449, creating additional divisions in the Court of Appeals, increasing the number of Court of Appeals justices from 69 to 78 by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1450, expanding the scope of LGUs over local public transportation systems by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1451, declaring May 8th of every year as a special working holiday in Maragundon Cavite and to be known as Liberators Guerrilla Day by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1452, declaring September 6th of every year as a special non-working holiday in Magallanes Cavite to commemorate its founding anniversary by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1453, urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of the Mungia locally known as Malunggay by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1454, declaring September 6th of every year as a special non-working holiday in Mendez Nunez Cavite to commemorate its founding anniversary by Representative Turantino.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1455, prohibiting and penalizing online cockfighting or isabong and other forms of online gambling by Representative Valeriano.
The Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 1456, declaring July 27th of every year a special national non-working holiday, amending for the purpose the commemoration of the founding anniversary of Iglesia de Cristo Act by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1457, punishing conspiracy and proposal to commit espionage and misprison of espionage by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1458, providing agricultural pension and social security benefits to farmers and fisherfolks by Representatives Luistro.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1459, declaring the Verde Island Passage in Batangas, Marinduke, Occidental Mindoro, Oriental Mindoro, and Romblon as an ecotourism zone by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1460, advancing the elimination of stigma and discrimination against persons with disabilities by Representative Luistro.
The Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1461, classifying and penalizing instant judicial killing as a heinous crime by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1462, creating a district engineering office in the 5th Legislative District of Batangas by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1463, mandating the localization of job opportunities by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1464, providing for a civil forfeiture in favor of the state, any unlawfully acquired real estate properties by any foreign national by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1465, providing for the administrative cancellation of birth certificates registered through fraudulent means by foreign nationals by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 1466, regulating specialist personnel officers and imposing penalties for misuse and misappropriation of funds by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 1467, regulating the allocation and utilization of confidential and intelligence funds, imposing penalties for misuse and misappropriation by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 1468, to increase the cash and assistance for non-teaching personnel of the DEPEN by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1469, providing for a comprehensive and responsive civil registration and vital statistics system by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 1470, providing for the Magna Carta of Barangay Health Workers by Representative Luistro.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1471, providing for the establishment of the Magna Carta of Students by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1472, amending Sections 16A and 16B of RA Number 7610 by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1473, establishing a pandemic and other public health emergency preparedness plan by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1474, giving preference to domestic bidders participating in government procurement projects by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1475, establishing the Office of Women's Health Research by Representative Remulia.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1476, establishing a Center for Autisme by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1477, to protect Filipinos from the harmful effects of trans fatty acids by Representative Remulia.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1478, further strengthening workers' right to self-organization by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1479, granting educational assistance in the form of scholarship grants to children of uniformed government personnel killed or permanently disabled in the line of duty by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1480, providing benefits and incentives to OFWs investing in business in the Philippines by Representative Remulia.
The Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 1481, enacting a new Philippine Building Act by Representative Momo.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1482, institutionalizing the development of critical thinking in basic education through critical pedagogy by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1483, strengthening critical pedagogy in teacher education and training programs by Representative Roman.
Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education and the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1484, promoting data-driven governance and AI solutions in the public sector by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1485, institutionalizing AI-enabled public sector innovation as a strategic priority under the Philippine Innovation Act by Representative Roman.
Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1486, declaring Pidis Falls in Palili, Sambalbataan an ecotourism site by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1487, reclassifying a portion of land of the public domain in the Dinopihan and Herboasa Bataan as agricultural land open to disposition for commercial, residential, and other purposes by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1488, converting a portion of the land as illinable and disposable to actual benefiting occupants thereof by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1489, declaring barangay talay in Orani Bataan an ecotourism zone by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 149, further promoting entrepreneurship by Representative Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 1491, modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Representative Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1492, declaring a climate change emergency by Representative Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Climate Change.
House Bill 1493, requiring all graduating senior high school and college students to plan to trace each as a civic duty for environment protection and preservation by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Special Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 1494, adopting a national strategy for the holistic and sustainable management of coastal and related ecosystems by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Climate Change.
House Bill 1495, providing for the Magna Carta of out-of-school youth by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1496, regulating the operation of motorcycles for hire and providing penalties in violation thereof by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1497, instituting a national citizen service training program in all public and private tertiary education institutions by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Basic.
House Bill 1498, instituting a national land use policy by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 1499, establishing the national framework for water resource management by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Public Works, Highways, and the Committee on Government and Reorganization.
House Bill 1500, enacting a new Philippine Building Act by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1501, standardizing the retirement benefits of justices, judges, and judiciary officials conferred with judicial rank, salary, and privileges by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1502, providing for the revised Government Audit Code of the Philippines by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1503, providing stronger measures for the conservation and protection of wildlife resources and their habitats by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1504, protecting the rights of internally displaced persons and penalizing the acts of arbitrary internal displacement by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 1505, upgrading and creating additional positions in the office of the Government Corporate Council by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1506, mandating a 1,000 peso increase in the SSS monthly pension by Representative Makasait.
The Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 1507, institutionalizing a Philippine Cacao Development Program, creating for the purpose the Philippine Cacao Industry Council by Representative UJZ Victoria.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1508, increasing the bed capacity of the Benguet General Hospital in Latrinedad Benguet from 200 to 400 beds by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1509, converting Latrinedad Benguet into a component city to be known as the City of Latrinedad by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1510, declaring July 15th of every year a special non-working holiday in the whole Cordillera to be known as Cordillera Day by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1511, vesting the Department of Agriculture the power to impose and regulate farm gate prices for highly perishable vegetables by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1512, providing for the Magna Carta of local Filipino miners by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1513, declaring Latrinedad Benguet as the strawberry capital of the Philippines by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1514, institutionalizing the AIX Program of the DSWD, providing penalties for the violation of certain unlawful acts by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 1515, providing pre-employment assistance to indigents by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 1516, increasing the monthly social pension of senior citizens and expanding the coverage thereof by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1517, granting hardship allowance to teachers assigned in remote areas by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Advic.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1518, creating three additional branches of the RTC in the Sixth Judicial Region to be stationed in Pasay and in Dumangas Iloilo by Representative Biron.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1519, converting the Don Valerio Palmares Senior Memorial District Hospital in Pasay Iloilo into a Level 2 hospital by Representative Biron.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1520, establishing the Office of the Register of Deeds in Pasay Iloilo by Representative Biron.
Committee on.
House Bill 1521, declaring Bulabog Putian National Park located in Dingle and San Enrique Iloilo a protected area to be named as Bulabog Putian Natural Park under the Nipas by Representative Biron.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1522, providing for early voting for qualified senior citizens in national and local elections by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1523, providing for early voting for qualified PWDs in national and local elections by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1524, providing for early voting by qualified lawyers in national and local elections by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1525, providing for early voting by qualified human resource for health in national and local elections by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1526, strengthening the Philippine disaster risk reduction and management by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
Committee on Disaster and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 1527, requiring LGUs to earmark at least 15% of their national tax allotment share for health services by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1528, authorizing the DOH to set and approve the bed capacity of all DOH hospitals by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1529, institutionalizing the conduct of impact evaluations as a component of government projects, activities, services, and policies by Representative Bolilia.
The Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 1530, institutionalizing the community-driven development approach as a national strategy for inclusive growth and social protection by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 1531, creating the Department of Disaster Management by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Disaster resilience and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 1532, granting postgraduate scholarships to public elementary and high school teachers in state colleges and universities by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1533, providing for the Magna Carta of Barangay Health Workers by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1534, instituting the Magna Carta of Daycare Workers by Representative Bolilia.
The Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1535, establishing a branch office of the Registry of Deeds of Batangas in Rosario Batangas by Representative Bolilia. House Bill 1536, providing protection and incentives to freelance workers by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1537, providing education pathways for basic education students by Representative Bolilia.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1538, declaring June 9th of every year a special non-working holiday in Rosario Batangas in celebration of its founding anniversary by Representative Bolilia.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1539, declaring November 11th of every year a special non-working holiday in Taishan Batangas in celebration of its founding anniversary by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1540, declaring December 12th of every year a special non-working holiday in San Juan Batangas by Representative Bolilia.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1541, transferring the supervision and control over provincial jails from the provincial government to the BJMP by Representative Matugas.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1542, rationalizing the land area requirement for the creation of a province amending the Local Government Code of 1991 by Representative Matugas.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1543, granting benefits and incentives to accredited Bantay Dagat by Representative Matugas.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1544, creating one additional branch of the MTC in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in Socorro, Surigao del Norte by Representative Matugas.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1545, strengthening the Farm-to-Market Through Development Program by Representative Ganin.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1546, creating the Eastern Visayas Development Authority by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 1547, creating the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement Team under the DOH by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1548, creating the Philippine Center for Disease Prevention and Control by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1549, providing for a 30-year national infrastructure program by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1550, creating a sustainable fiscal framework for the pension system of the military and uniformed personnel by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato. House Bill 1550, creating a sustainable physical framework for the pension system of the military and uniformed personnel by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1551, instituting a national citizen service training program in all public and private tertiary education institutions by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1552, strengthening the Philippine healthcare system by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1553, establishing a framework for blue economy by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 1554, providing for the revised government auditing code of the Philippines by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1555, restructuring the Energy Regulatory Commission by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Energy.
House Bill 1556, imposing excise tax on single-use plastics by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1557, establishing the National Framework for Water Resource Management by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Public Works, Highway, and Highways and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 1558, amending Articles 36 and 45 of the Family Code of the Philippines by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 1559, prohibiting online gambling in the Philippines by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 1560, mandating the DSWD to adjudicate and enforce claims for child support through an administrative process by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1561, declaring the Binian Heritage District in Binian a national historical cultural heritage zone by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1562, providing for the apportionment of the lone legislative district of Binian Laguna by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1563, amending Section 24 of the National Internal Revenue Code by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1564, amending Sections 15 and 16 of the Republic Act of National Prosecution Service Act of 2010. by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1565, amending Article 365 of the Revised Penal Code by Representative Di Magila.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1566, instituting the Medical Reserve Corps by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1567, providing for regulation of tricycles by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1568, requiring the planting of trees for construction of residential, commercial, industrial, and public buildings by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 1569, providing for early voting by qualified senior citizens and PWDs in national and local elections by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1570, establishing the Philippine Virology Science and Technology Institute by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1571, imposing stiffer penalties for falsification of certificates of land title by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1572, amending Sections 15 and 16 of the National Prosecution Service Act of 2010. by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1573, mandating the National Historical Commission to create an official music video for the Philippine national anthem Lupang Hinira by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1574, making the appointment of an Environment and National Resource Officer mandatory in all provinces, cities, and municipalities by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1575, declaring the immediate environs of Our Lady of Candelaria Parish Church in Silang Cavite as a tourism destination by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1576, converting the Congressional Avenue in General Mariano Alvarez Cavite into a national road by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1577, converting the Southwoods Avenue in Carmona Cavite into a national road by Representative Loyola.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1578, providing for a 0 peso excise tax for LPG, diesel, and gasoline by Representative T.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1579, creating two additional branches of the RTC in the 7th Judicial Region to be stationed in Can Dihai and Valencia Bohol by Representative Totor.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1580, allowing the extension of services of retireable officials and employees in the government service under exceptional circumstances by Representative Totor.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1581, granting civil service eligibility to those who have rendered at least three consecutive years of government service or at least five non-consecutive years whose appointment status is either contractual, casual, or job order by Representative Totor.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1582, providing for free freight services in the transportation of relief goods to calamity-stricken areas by Representative Castro.
Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 1583, renaming Barangay Ogoog in Barlig Mountain Province as Barangay Ogoog Kadaklan by Representative Dalog.
Committee on Local Government.
Barangay 1584, sorry, House Bill 1584, renaming Barangay Calayo in Barlig Mountain Province as Barangay Calayo Kadaklan by Representative Dalog.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1585, renaming Barangay Chupac in Barlig Mountain Province as Barangay Chupac Kadaklan by Representative Dalog.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1586, recognizing the community conserve territories and areas of indigenous peoples and cultural communities by Representative Dalog.
Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples.
House Bill 1587, renaming Barangay Lunas in Barlig Mountain Province as Barangay Lunas Kadaklan by Representative Dalog.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1588, establishing and operationalize the single-ticket system and to create the Trade Network Office of the Philippines by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1589, providing for the modernization of public health emergency preparedness and response capabilities by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1590, instituting a national land use and management policy by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 1591, further promoting entrepreneurship by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 1592, establishing the OFW Hospital by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1593, mandating the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy to select one cadet from each congressional district each year to comprise its incoming class by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1594, providing stronger measures for the conservation and protection of wildlife resources and their habitats by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1595, mandating the DOH to provide at least one health worker in every barangay, increasing their salaries and benefits by Representative Premesias Agabas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1596, establishing in San Miguel Island Tabaco Albay the San Miguel Island TESA Training and Assessment Center by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1597, establishing in Raporapu Albay the Raporapu Albay TESA Training Assessment Center by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1598, establishing in Manito Albay the Manito Albay TESA Training and Assessment Center by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1599, establishing in Cagrara Island Bakakay Albay the Cagrara Island TESA Training and Assessment Center by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1600, renaming the Beagle Regional Habitat and Medical Center in Daraga Albay into Southern Luzon Medical Center by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1601, granting universal social pension to senior citizens by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1602, strengthening the animal welfare standards in the Philippines by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1603, strengthening the Charter of the Philippine National Police Academy by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1604, reducing the optional retirement age to 56 years old by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1605, providing enhanced protection, security, and benefits for media workers by Representative Garbin.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bills 1606 and 1607, declaring Angel Falls and Busai Falls in Calbayog Samar as an ecotourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1608, declaring Danau Dam Park, Danau Cave, and Ginogan Cave and River in Calbayog as nature-based tourism destinations by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1609, declaring the enchanted Beringan City in Poblason Pagsanghan a health and wellness destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1610, declaring Lakong Cord Farm in Manhaco Banharis and Bisitahan in Tarangnan Samar a farm and agritourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1611, declaring Makatingog Falls located in Makatingog, Calbayog Samar as an ecotourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1612, declaring Sulpan Cave and Sulpan Lake Cathedral Cave, Diet Cave, and Underground River in the municipality of Matuginaw a nature-based tourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1613, establishing the National Coastal Green Belt Program by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1614, declaring Onoyan Falls located in San Rufino, Calbayog Samar as an ecotourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Climate Change.
House Bill 1615, declaring that Tinago Ruins in Dap Dap, Tarangnan a heritage and cultural tourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1622, transferring the power to declare a state of calamity in a local government unit to the local chief executive by Representative Garcia Karen Hope.
Committee on Local Government. Jump ulit? So 16... To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1623, granting provinces a share in the proceeds of real property taxes imposed by component cities by Representative Garcia Karen Hope.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1624, separating the Buwanay National High School, Gias National High School Extension in Gias Balamban, Cebu from Buwanay National High School, converting it into the EH Gias National High School by Representative Garcia Karen Hope.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1625, promoting national awareness through the mandatory study of the West Philippine Sea in public and private educational institutions by Representatives Jokno, Sendanya, Delima, Bagaw, Ismula, and Lagman.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1626, declaring July 12 as the National West Philippine Sea Victory Day in commemoration of the Philippines' triumph before the permanent court of arbitration by Representatives Delima, Sendanya, Jokno, Ismula, Bagaw, and Lagman.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1627, reapportioning the lone district of Basilan, creating the first and second legislative districts of Basilan by Representatives Alano.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1628, providing for civil forfeiture in favor of the state any unlawfully acquired real estate properties by any foreign national by Representatives Suarez, Abante, Ortega, Adyong, Konghun, Yonisho, Gutierrez, Suwan, Luistro, and Flores.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1629, classifying and penalizing extrajudicial killing as a heinous crime by Representatives Suarez, Abante, Adyong, Ortega, Yonisho, Gutierrez, Konghun, Luistro, and Flores.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1630, mandating the establishment of an office on architectural planning and design in all provinces, cities, and municipalities by Representative Suntay.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1631, regulating the use of bicycles as an alternative mode of transportation by Representative Suntay.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1646, modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1647, providing for the revised cooperative code of the Philippines by Representatives Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villaforte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
Committee on Cooperative Development.
House Bill 1648, providing for the right of married women to retain their maiden surnames by Representatives Samora Isabel Maria.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1649, requiring all graduating senior high school and college students to plant two trees each as civic duty for environment protection and preservation by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Special Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 1650, mandating the TESA to design and implement technical vocational, educational, and training livelihood programs specifically for rehabilitated drug dependents by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1651, establishing an agriculture information system in all cities and municipalities by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1652, mandating public telecommunications entities and internet service providers to institute a refund mechanism for service outages and disruptions by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 1653, providing for the manacarta of the out-of-school youth by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1654, providing for cheaper and more accessible Internet for All by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1655, imposing stiffer penalties for the offenses of stealing or vandalizing of government road and traffic signs, warning devices, accessories, and other facilities by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1656, declaring the 4th Thursday of November as National Thanksgiving Day by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1657, prohibiting the detention of motor vehicle drivers who are involved in a traffic accident who provided sufficient proof of their defensive driving by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1658, imposing forfeiture on the overhead charges due to unintended or unannounced utility service interruption by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1659, mandating the provision of burial assistance to 20,000 pesos for every Filipino citizen who dies within the Philippine territory by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 1660, granting civil service eligibility to government-paid personnel who have rendered at least 12 consecutive years of efficient service under temporary status by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1661, providing for the manacarta of barangay health workers by Representative Ortega.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1662, providing all barangay officials a lump sum retirement pay equivalent to one-year honorarium by Representative Ortega.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1663, establishing the Battle of the Cebuyan Sea Memorial Shrine in Kahidiokan, Romblon, and declaring it a tourism destination by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1664, declaring the Minokot Beach area in Bunsooran, Ferol, Romblon an ecotourism destination by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1665, declaring the Kolongkolong Beach in Corcuera, Romblon a tourism destination by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1666, declaring the municipality of San Jose popularly known as Isla de Carabao, Province of Romblon, a tourism destination by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1667, declaring the Looc Bay Area in Looc, Romblon an ecotourism destination by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1668, declaring the Payayasog Beach in Magansag, Corcuera, Romblon a tourism destination by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1669, declaring the ruins of Kota de San Jose in Corcuera, Romblon a tourism site by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1670, declaring the municipality of San Andres, Romblon, a tourism development area by Representative Madrona.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1671, declaring the municipality of Santa Fe, Romblon, a tourism destination. House Bill 1671, declaring the municipality of Santa Fe, Romblon, a tourism destination by Representative Madrona.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1672, declaring the Citi It Elepante Rock Formation in the coast of Labani, Corcuera, Romblon, a tourism site by Representative Madrona.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1673, declaring the Subak Cove in Barangaysan Roque, Mangansag, and Mabini, Corcuera, Romblon, an ecotourism destination by Representative Madrona.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1674, promoting transparent governance and instituted anti-corruption mechanisms in the operation of banks and other financial institutions by Representative Kyeng.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 1675, regulating the proliferation of online gambling in the Philippines by Representative Plato.
The Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 1676, institutionalizing barangaytanod as auxiliary police personnel by Representative Erise.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1677, expanding the Office of Senior Citizens Affairs and granting additional benefits to its head by Representative Ordanes.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1678, establishing the Sangguriyang Senior Citizens to provide a platform to participate in nation-building and promote their welfare by Representative Ordanes.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1679, providing for a free annual medical checkup for senior citizens by Representative Ordanes.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1680, granting free vaccination for all senior citizens by Representative Ordanes.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 1681, providing for free hemodialysis, peritoneal dialysis, and other DOH-approved dialysis procedures for all senior citizens by Representative Ordanes.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1682, defining the election offense of premature campaigning by Representative Valeriano.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 1683, establishing in-city vertical housing for settlement programs for informal settor families in high-density urban areas in the country by Representative Valeriano.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1684, mandating the appointment of at least one barangay health worker in every barangay by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Local Development.
House Bill 1685, creating the Department of Water, Irrigation, Sewage, and Sanitation Resource Management by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Public Works in Highways and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 1686, creating the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement Team under the DOH by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1687, establishing the No Call, No Text, and No Email Registration System by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 1688, establishing TESTA Training and Assessment Center in Alabak Quezon by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education.
House Bill 1689, establishing TESTA Training and Assessment Center in Gumaka Quezon by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1690, establishing TESTA Training and Assessment Center in Pagkawayan Quezon by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1691, establishing TESTA Training and Assessment Center in Ginayangan Quezon by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1692, establishing a TESTA Training and Assessment Center in the municipality of Quezon, province of Quezon by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1693, declaring Bangon Falls a nature park in Tinaplakan, Calbayog, an ecotourism destination by Representative Tan Stephen James.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1694, declaring Kawayan Island and Kamandag Island in Santo Niño Samar as ecotourism destinations by Representative Tan Stephen James.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1695, declaring February eleven of every year as a special non-working holiday in Ibaan-Batangas in celebration of its founding anniversary by Representative Bolilia.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1696, mandating the provision of free anti-rabies vaccinations in all public health centers nationwide by Representative Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1697, establishing a film and media production incentive program to attract foreign and domestic investments by Representative Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz.
Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Bill 1698, modernizing technical vocational education and training in the Philippines by Representative Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1699, institutionalizing digital literacy, coding, and AI greatness in basic and higher education by Representative Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education.
House Bill 1700, institutionalizing the National Youth Mental Health and Digital Well-being Program by Representative Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1701, establishing a national electronic health record system by Representative Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1702, declaring September eleven of every year a special non-working holiday in Elocos Norte to be known as President Ferdinand Edeline Marcos Day by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1703, regulating the production, importation, sale, and use of single-use plastics by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 1704, exempting PWDs and senior citizens from the payment of parking fees in all commercial establishments and government buildings that charge parking fees by Representative Barba.
Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1705, institutionalizing the DSW Sustainable Livelihood Program by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Social Services.
House Bills 1706, establishing the Special Economic Zone in Freeport in Elocos Norte, creating the Elocos Norte Special Economic Zone and Freeport Authority by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1707, establishing the Philippine Integrated Agriculture and Formation System in all cities and municipalities by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1708, establishing anti-agricultural smuggling courts, granting them exclusive original jurisdiction over cases involving agricultural products by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1709, allowing disadvantaged students enrolled in short courses in technical vocational institutions to take the scheduled periodic and final examinations without requiring a permit by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1710, establishing the Philippine Transportation Safety Board by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1711, establishing food security cold storage facilities in every province of the country by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 1712, providing for additional modernization funding to the Pagasa by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 1713, promoting and supporting the development of the corn industry by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1714, upgrading and creating additional positions in the Office of the Government Corporate Council by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1715, redefining the crime of game fixing and providing penalties therefore by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 1716, establishing an apostille service at the DFA Tugigara Councilor Office in Karigsor, Tugigara City, Kagayan by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Bill 1717, establishing a forensic DNA database in the Philippines by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1718, promoting the development of Philippine shipbuilding and ship repair industry by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1719, amending RA Number Eight Seven Nine Four, imposing a motor vehicle user's charge on owners of all types of motor vehicles by Representative Barba.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1720, providing for the full and effective implementation and enforcement of international maritime instruments, of which the Philippines is a state party by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1721, encouraging and institutionalizing corporate social responsibility by Representative Barba.
Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1722, providing for the revitalization and capability enhancement of the PNP by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1723, amending Section Nineteen of the Philippine National Police Reform and Reorganization Act of nineteen ninety-eight by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1724, establishing the National Police Clearance System by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1725, authorizing the disposal of unclaimed, recovered, and impounded carnap motor vehicles by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1726, to include other baccalaureate degrees to the lateral entry program for line and technical officers by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1727, providing for a unified system for separation, retirement, and pension of the military and uniformed personnel services by Representative Barba.
The Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1728, instituting the Magna Carta for all non-uniformed workers in the military and other uniformed agencies by Representative Barba.
Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1729, strengthening the practice of electrical engineering in the Philippines by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1730, providing for a national employment assistance program by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1731, creating one regional heart center in each of the administrative regions in the Philippines by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Health.
House Bills 1732, creating one regional lung center in each of the administrative regions in the Philippines by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1733, creating one regional kidney and transplant institute in each of the administrative regions in the Philippines by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1734, establishing public basic education schools in geographically isolated and disadvantaged and conflict-affected areas by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1735, granting economic relief to all working Filipinos by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1736, granting economic relief to micro and small enterprises by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1737, enhancing the thirteenth month pay and other benefits by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1738, enhancing the unemployment insurance or involuntary separation benefits by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Government Enterprise and Privatization.
House Bill 1739, further extending the period of availability of the estate tax amnesty until June thirty, twenty twenty-eight by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1740, creating the Magna Carta for public transportation drivers by Representative Po.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1741, eradicating abusive contractualization practices and penalizing employers and contractors who commit such abuses by Representative Po.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1742, establishing a one-stop-shop facility for government employment requirements of new graduates by Representative Po.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1743, establishing an onsite or near-city resettlement program for informal settler families by Representative Po.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1744, expanding the coverage of the Universal Healthcare Law in the National Integrated Cancer Control Act to include post-chemotherapy and radiation therapy medications by Representative Po.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1745, institutionalizing the National Hybrid Rice Program by Representative Po.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1746, revising the Animal Welfare Act of the Philippines and creating for the purpose the Animal Welfare Bureau under the Department of Agriculture by Representative Po.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1747, providing for a five-year validity period of the professional identification cards of all professionals under the Professional Regulation Commission by Representative Totor.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1748, creating the Code Commission of the Philippines to review and codify Philippine laws by Representative Zamora Isabel Maria.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1749, providing for the revised government auditing code of the Philippines by Representative Zamora Isabel Maria.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1750, establishing the District Safety Surveillance Program in the Third Congressional District of Negros Oriental by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1751, establishing a national website for anonymous reporting of crimes and violations by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1752, declaring the municipality of Darwin in Negros Oriental as the night-diving capital of the Philippines by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1753, creating the Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries and Resources and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 1754, establishing the Head Start Program by Representative Degamo.
Committee on the Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1755, establishing a national database of criminal offenders, integrating law enforcement and judicial records by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1756, established driving under the influence as an aggravating circumstance in all cases by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1757, converting the Bayawan District Hospital in Bayawan, Negros Oriental into a Level Two hospital, increasing its bed capacity from seventy to two hundred by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 1758, establishing community-based skills and trades training centers in the Third District of Negros Oriental by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1759, increasing the bed capacity of Jose B. Linget Memorial General Hospital in San Fernando City, Pamanga, from one thousand to one thousand five hundred by Representative Bondock.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1760, mandating the establishment of one-stop-shop center in the Third District of Negros Oriental by Representative Degamo.
The Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1761, establishing the scope and procedure for Philippine ship registry by Representative Barba.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1762, converting Zamora Street and City proper district, Ilo-Ilo City, into a national road by Representative Baronda.
Committee on Public Works in Highways.
House Bill 1763, converting Halandoni Street and City proper district, Ilo-Ilo City, into a national road by Representative Baronda.
Committee on Public Works in Highways.
House Bill 1764, converting Ibierna Street and City proper district, Ilo-Ilo City, into a national road by Representative Baronda.
The Committee on Public Works in Highways.
House Bill 1765, converting Fahardo Street and Haro, Ilo-Ilo City, into a national road by Representative Baronda.
The Committee on Public Works in Highways.
House Bill 1766, converting Del Carmen Street and Haro, Ilo-Ilo City, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Baronda.
The Committee on Public Works in Highways.
House Bill 1767, converting Quartero Street and Haro, Ilo-Ilo City, into a national road by Representative Baronda.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1768, providing for the Magna Carta of barangay health workers by Representative Baronda.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1769, establishing the Agriculture Information System in all cities and municipalities by Representatives Yu Joseph Kim and Yu Jayzel Victoria.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1770, promoting the development of the bamboo industry by Representatives Yu Joseph Kim and Yu Jayzel Victoria.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1771, establishing a national program for the development of the Philippine coffee industry by Representatives Yu Joseph Kim and Yu Jayzel Victoria.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1772, establishing the Young Farmers and Fisherfolk Challenge Program by Representatives Yu Joseph Kim and Yu Jayzel Victoria.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1773, requiring parking space for motor vehicle buyers in metropolitan areas as a prerequisite for the purchase of a motor vehicle and registration with the LTO by Representative Castro.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1774, creating barangay isis in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1775, creating barangay Bugdangan in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1776, creating barangay Ferdinand in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1777, creating barangay Ilangilang in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1778, creating barangay Mamuhay in the municipality of Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1779, creating barangay Maitom in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1780, creating barangay Manawi in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1781, creating barangay Capda in Loretto Agusan del Sur by Representatives Plaza and Basco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1782, providing for the establishment of the Philippine DNA database system by Representative Castro.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1783, prohibiting online gambling in the Philippines by Representatives Subiri.
The Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 1784, rationalizing the Philippine basic education system by removing the senior high school by Representatives Shimura.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1785, to provide the foreign mandatory sponsorship of field health premium contributions by local government units by Representative Ong Chuwan.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1786, promoting transparent governance and instituting anti-corruption mechanisms in the operation of banks and other financial institutions by Representatives Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz, Vila Fuerte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 1787, to further develop capability and establish expeditious transformation of the Department of National Defense and its bureaus by Representatives Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz, Vila Fuerte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
The Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 1788, to reform the budget process by enforcing greater accountability in public financial management by Representatives Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz, Vila Fuerte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 1789, mandating the establishment of Fisherfolk Settlement Areas by the Department of Agriculture, Dishood, DNR, and LGUs by Representatives Vila Fuerte Miguel Luiz, Vila Fuerte Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
The Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries and Resources?
House Bill 1790, promoting rural agricultural technology access and innovation through a national support program for farmers and youth by Representative Ong Chuwan.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food?
House Bill 1791, establishing a central multi-species freshwater hatchery in Barotak Viejo, Iloilo by Representatives Tupas.
The Committee on Agriculture, Fisheries and Resources?
House Bill 1792, establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in Carces, Iloilo by Representatives Tupas.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food?
House Bill 1792?
The Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries and Resources?
House Bill 1793, establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in Concepcion, Iloilo by Representatives Tupas.
The Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries and Resources?
House Bill 1794, mandating that patients with congenital heart disease be given the same privileges as PWDs by Representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities?
House Bills 1795, authorizing the disposal of unclaimed recovered and unpounded car and motor vehicles by Representative Momo.
The Committee on Revision of Laws?
House Bill 1796, providing for a national anti-doping policy in sports by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development?
House Bill 1797, prohibiting any activity related to online cockfighting or e-sabong operations by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Games and Amusement?
House Bill 1798, strengthening the commission of human rights as a national human rights institution by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Human Rights?
House Bill 1799, granting hazard pay to public prosecutors exposed to hazardous situations and for performing hazardous duties related to assigned cases by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Justice?
House Bill 1800, imposing a lagging ban in the city of Cagayan de Oro by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Natural Resources?
House Bill 1801, declaring the city of Cagayan de Oro a mining free zone by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Natural Resources?
House Bill 1802, strengthening the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1803, establishing the private basic education voucher program by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1804, strengthening the legal education board by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1805, strengthening the Midtown State University System by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1806, establishing a comprehensive system for the registration and licensing of social welfare and development agencies accreditation of social welfare and development programs and services by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Social Services?
House Bill 1807, strengthening the competitiveness of the Philippine motor vehicle manufacturing industry by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Trading Industry?
House Bill 1808, reclassifying as agricultural land a parcel land of the public domain situated in Lourdes Alubihid, Misamis Oriental, to be utilized as the site of the Science and Technology Park of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Natural Resources?
House Bill 1809, converting the extension campuses of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines in Balubal, Cagayan de Oro and in Asaan, both in Misamis Oriental, into regular campuses by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1810, providing for free professional examinations to qualified indigents by Representative Ginto.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation?
House Bill 1811, institutionalizing the Medical Assistance to Indigent and Financially Incapacitated Patients Program of the DOH by Representative Ginto.
The Committee on Health?
House Bill 1812, providing for a national policy on students' rights and welfare by Representative Ginto.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education?
House Bill 1813, providing for post-harvest facilities to farmers by Representative Ginto.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food?
House Bill 1814, establishing a rental housing subsidy program for informal settler families by Representative Ginto.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development?
House Bill 1815, prohibiting online gambling in the Philippines by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Games and Amusement?
House Bill 1816, mandating the appointment of barangay information officer in every barangay by Representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Committee on Local Government?
House Bill 1817, promoting investments in low-carbon economy by Representatives Alba and Veloso Tuazon.
The Committee on Climate Change?
House Bill 1818, establishing a technical vocational institution under the supervision and administration of the Testa in Santa Maria Bulakan by Representative Plato.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1819, providing for the Magna Carta of barangay health workers by Representative Plato.
The Committee on Local Government?
House Bill 1820, establishing public basic education schools in geographically isolated and disadvantaged and conflict-affected areas by Representatives U. Joseph Kim and U. Jazel Victoria.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1821, providing for the fair use of the internet and social media for the holding of free, orderly, honest, peaceful and credible elections by Representative Dalog.
The Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms?
House Bill 1822, providing incentives for private carpooling in order to reduce traffic congestion in the country by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Transportation?
House Bill 1823, providing for a five-year validity period of the professional identification cards of all professionals covered by the PRC by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation?
House Bill 1824, requiring parents to plant two trees for every child born to them by Representative Olivares.
To the Special Committee on Reforestation?
House Bill 1825, defining abuse towards differently-abled senior citizens by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Senior Citizen?
House Bill 1826, mandating the Field Health to increase the hemodialysis treatment coverage of its members to at least 156 sessions annually sessions annually and providing said medical package free of charge to indigent patients by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Health?
House Bill 1827, protecting children from child sexual exploitation and abuse, child trafficking, child pornography and violent crime on children by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Welfare Children?
House Bill 1828, mandating banks, financial institutions and other credit card issuers to eliminate the annual membership fees, dues or joining fees for their credit card holders, users, customers and patrons by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries?
House Bill 1829, promoting entrepreneurship by establishing a sustainable financing program for micro and small enterprises by Representative Olivares.
The Committee on Micro, Small and Medium Enterprise Development?
House Bill 1830, ordaining the promotion of social enterprises to alleviate poverty by Representative Alba.
The Committee on Micro, Small and Medium Enterprise Development?
House Bill 1831, establishing a regular campus of the Don Honorio Medura State University in Macabebe to be known as DHVSU Macabebe Campus by Representative Bondok.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1832, granting survivorship and all other additional benefits in parity with their counterparts in the judiciary in favor of the chairperson, commissioner or labor arbiter of the National Labor Relations Commission by Representative Valeriano.
The Committee on Labor and Development?
House Bill 1833, creating and establishing the Masbate Sports Academy in Dimaslang Masbate by Representative Co Wilton.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development?
House Bill 1834, establishing PRC District Office in Kata Ingan Masbate by Representative Co Wilton.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation?
House Bill 1835, declaring the Matayum Lagoon in Matayum Kata Ingan Masbate an ecotourism destination by Representative Co Wilton.
The Committee on Tourism?
House Bill 1836, establishing an LTFRB District Office in Kata Ingan Masbate by Representative Co Wilton.
Committee on Transportation?
House Bill 1837, providing for the conversion of the junction Ban Tolan-San Ramon-San Vicente Road in Uson Masbate into a national road by Representative Co Wilton.
Committee on Public Works and Highways?
House Bill 1838, providing for the conversion of the junction Del Carmen-Malbug Road in Uson and Kawayan all in Masbate into a national road by Representative Co Wilton.
Committee on Public Works and Highways?
House Bill 1839, establishing in Publacion PUV Corpus Masbate, La Saberino Pi Arellano Memorial National High School by Representative Co Wilton.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1840, establishing a regular campus of the Dr. Emilio B. Espinoza Senior Memorial State College of Agriculture and Technology in Placer Masbate by Representative Co Wilton.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1841, defining and criminalizing red tagging by Representative De Lima.
Committee on Justice?
House Bill 1842, providing for the Magna Carta of barangay health workers by Representative De Lima.
Committee on Local Government?
House Bill 1843, prohibiting black sand mining in the Philippines, providing penalties therefore by Representative De Lima.
Committee on Natural Resources?
House Bill 1844, amending Article 117 of the Revised Penal Code of the Philippines by Representative De Lima.
The Committee on Revision of Laws?
House Bill 1845, regulating the allocation and utilization of confidential and intelligence funds by Representative De Lima.
Committee on Appropriations?
House Bill 1846, declaring the Baybay Maasin Makrohon Sogod Road into a primary national road by Representative Mercado.
Committee on Public Works and Highways?
House Bill 1847, mandating the construction until completion of Maasin Airport in Maasin City, Southern Lete by Representative Mercado.
Committee on Transportation?
House Bill 1848, creating a science national high school in Southern Lete by Representative Mercado.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1849, establishing the Southern Lete Sports Academy and Training Center in the capital city of Maasin, Southern Lete by Representative Mercado.
The Committee on Youth, Sports and Development?
House Bill 1850, establishing a banana and abacate tissue culture laboratory in Maasin City, Southern Lete by Representative Mercado.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food?
House Bill 1851, an act against the practice of endo and contracting by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula and Bagao.
The Committee on Labor and Employment?
House Bill 1852, regulating the rational exploration, development and utilization of mineral resources by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula and Bagao.
The Committee on Natural Resources?
House Bill 1853, providing for additional maternity leave to women with postpartum depression by Representative Bautista Lim.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Labor and Employment?
House Bills 1854 and 1855, declaring the Islas de Gigantes and Tabalisa Island, both in the province of Iloilo an ecotourism zone by Representative Tupas.
The Committee on Tourism?
House Bill 1856, establishing the Northern Iloilo General Hospital in San Junisio-Iloilo by Representative Tupas.
Committee on Health?
House Bill 1857, creating the Department of Fisheries and Coastal Resources by Representative Tupas.
The Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries and Resources and the Committee on Government and Reorganization?
House Bill 1858, creating the Department of Technical Education, Training and Certification by Representative Tupas.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1859, regulating noise pollution by creating the Noise Pollution Control Board by Representative Tupas.
The Committee on Ecology?
House Bill 1860, instituting a national land use policy by Representatives Vilifette Miguel Luiz, Vilifette Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata and Redon.
The Committee on Special Committee on Land Use?
House Bill 1861, creating two additional branches of the RTC in the Second Judicial Region to be stationed in Rojas Isabella by Representative D. Faustino Michael Carlos.
Committee on Justice?
House Bill 1862, establishing a fish port in Basay, 3rd District, Negros Oriental by Representative Degamo.
Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries and Resources?
House Bill 1863, establishing the Tambobo Bay Port and Logistics Hub in the Siaton, Negros Oriental by Representative Degamo.
Committee on Transportation?
House Bill 1864, institutionalizing the granting of assistance to individuals in crisis situation by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Social Service?
House Bill 1865, institutionalizing the granting of Ayudas Akapos Angita Program of the DSWD by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Social Service?
House Bill 1866, establishing the Camarines Norte 1st District Engineering Office of the DPWH in Labo Camarines Norte by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Public Works and Highways?
House Bill 1867, providing for the retroactive application of salary increases or adjustments and additional allowance for civilian government personnel by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Appropriations?
House Bill 1868, declaring the province of Camarines Norte as the surfing capital of the Biko region by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Local Government?
House Bill 1869, establishing the Jose Pangani Ban Special Economic Zone and Freeport in Camarines Norte by Representative Panotes.
The Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trading Industry?
House Bill 1870, upgrading the Camarines Norte Provincial Hospital in Daed Camarines Norte into the Camarines Norte General Hospital by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Health?
House Bill 1871, allowing tricycles to travel beyond the regular route of service as embodied in their franchise in emergency cases by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Transportation?
House Bill 1872, establishing in Daed Camarines Norte the Camarines Norte Testa Training and Assessment Center by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1873, providing for the welfare of the elderly by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Senior Citizen?
House Bill 1874, upgrading the entry-level position of registered nurses in all public health institutions by Representative Panotes.
The Committee on Appropriations?
House Bill 1875, authorizing the local sangunianas of municipalities and cities, except in metropolitan Manila, to designate tricycle lanes in public roads or highways within their respective territorial jurisdiction by Representative Panotes.
Committee on Local Government?
House Bill 1876, prohibiting all forms of online and off-site gambling, including online cockfighting or e-sabong by Representative Abante.
The Committee on Games and Amusement?
House Bill 1877, prohibiting advertisement and promotion of online gambling-related content by Representative Abante.
The Committee on Games and Amusement?
House Bill 1878, promoting digital well-being and responsible use of technology, mandating digital awareness, education and providing measures for the protection of mental health in the digital age by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Information and Communication Technology?
House Bill 1879, establishing a national program for the mental health and social well-being of senior citizens by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Senior Citizen?
House Bill 1880, institutionalizing employment readiness and entrepreneurship training in senior high school and tertiary education by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education?
House Bill 1881, institutionalizing environmental protection and global warming prevention as a mandatory component in the basic education curriculum by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1882, promoting mental health equity in the Philippine educational system by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1883, providing mental health support for parents and caregivers by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Health?
House Bill 1884, mandating calorie labeling on menus of food service establishments by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Health?
House Bill 1885, establishing the Charter of the National Center for Mental Health by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Health?
House Bill 1886, preventing and penalizing cyberbullying and other forms of online abuse by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Information and Communication Technology?
House Bill 1887, Quality and Inclusive Education Act by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture?
House Bill 1888, institutionalizing a national framework for suicide prevention and crisis response by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
The Committee on Health?
House Bill 1889, declaring certain parcels of land occupied by educational institutions within the welfare of the property located in Badaloyung City as ex- House Bill 1889, Declaring Certain Parcells of Land Occupied by Educational Institutions Within the Welfare of Your Property Located in Badaloyung City as Except from Any Sale or Disposition by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1890, Promoting Mental Health and the Wellbeing in the Workplace Instituting Measures to Prevent Burnout by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1891, To Establish Accessible and Age Appropriate Mental Health Services for Children and Adolescent Population by Representative Gonzalez Alexandria.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1892, Providing for the Bill of Rights of Commuters by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1893, Eliminating Gender Discrimination in Certain Crimes by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 1894, Instituting a Comprehensive Program for the Prevention, Early Detection, Diagnosis, and Treatment of Persons with Autism Spectrum Disorders by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1895, Providing for the Inclusion of the Secondary Education Curriculum of the Lives and Heresy of Comfort Women During the Japanese Occupation of the Philippines by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1896, Creating the Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Government and Reorganization.
House Bill 1897, Establishing a Legal Scholarship and Return Service Program for Qualified and Deserving Students by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1898, Directing each City Municipality and Academic Institution to Hire or Designate at Least One Mental Health Professional by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1899, Protecting Employees from Termination or Layoff Due to Automation by Artificial Intelligence by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1900, Establishing Job Placement Offices in Public High Schools by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1901, Strengthening the Water Services Cooperatives by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Cooperatives and Development.
House Bill 1902, Mandating the Provision of Maternity Packages to Pregnant Filipino Women Belonging to Low-Income Group by Representative Suwan.
Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 1903, Creating Encarments Surigao-Delsor, the Barangay Hinapoyan by Representative Momo.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1904, Integrating and Establishing Pertinent Policies and Regulations to Ensure the Sustainability of the Philippine Tourism Industry by Representative Gomez.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1905, Authorizing LGUs and the PNP to Conduct Anti-Criminality and Anti-Drug Inspections in Seaports and Airport Grounds by Representative Gomez.
Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 1906, Mandating Annual Conduct of National Voluntary Review of the Philippines Performance of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals by Representative Gomez.
Committee on Sustainable Development and Goals.
House Bill 1907, Mandating the Establishment and Maintenance of a Centralized Patient Record System in Municipalities and Cities by Representative Libanad.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1908, Declaring the Bien Unido Double Barrier Reef and its Immediate Underwater Environments in Bien Unido, Bohol, a Tourist Destination by Representative Omentado.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 1909, Establishing two Additional Schools Division Offices for Second and Third Congressional Districts of Bohol by Representative Omentado.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1910, Establishing two Additional School Division Offices in Bohol by Representative Omentado.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1911, Establishing a Special Economic Zone in Bohol, Creating the Northern Bohol Special Economic Zone Authority by Representative Omentado.
Committee on Economics Affairs and Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1912, Institutionalisating Constitutional Literacy and Civic Engagement from Grades 4 to 12 in all Public and Private Education Institutions by Representative Roman.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1913, Expanding the Pantawid Pamiliang Pilipino Program by Representative Pumarin.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 1914, Providing for Free Professional Examinations to Qualified Indigents by Representative Pumarin.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1915, Providing for Lifetime Validity of PW Identification Cards for Those with Permanent Disability or Elderly by Representative Pumarin.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1916, Providing for the Social Pensions of Indigent PWDs by Representative Pumarin.
Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1917, Expanding the Services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation in Encouraging Private Sector Participation in Agricultural Insurance by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1918, Promoting Transparent Governance and Instituting Anti-Corruption Mechanisms in the Operation of Banks and Other Financial Institutions by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 1919, Strengthening the Philippine Healthcare System by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 1920, Establishing a Regulatory Framework for a Robust, Reliable, and Trustworthy Development Application and Use of AI Systems by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 1921, Reform Budget Process. by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 1922, Institutionalisating and Strengthening the National Cybersecurity Framework by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 1923, Enhancing the National Shelter Program by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1924, Enhancing the Discount of the Purchase of Goods and Services of Senior Citizens and PWDs by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Ways and Means, Committee on Senior Citizens, and Special Committee on the Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1925, Providing Protection Incentives to Freelance Workers by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1926, Creating the Health Emergency Auxiliary Enforcement Team under the DOH by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1927, Modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1928, Establishing Public Basic Education Schools in Geographically Isolated and Disadvantaged and Conflict Affectant Areas by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1929, Instituting a National Land Use Policy by Representative Luistro.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 1930, To Develop a National Quality Policy by Representative Luistro.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 1931, Creating the Philippine Centers for Disease Prevention and Control by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1932, Establishing the Private Basic Education Voucher Program by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1933, Strengthening the Regulatory Powers of the NFA by Representative Luistro.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1934, Creating one Additional Branch of Family Court in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in Kagayan di Oro City, Misamis Oriental by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee Justice Committee.
House Bill 1935, Creating three Additional Branches of the Municipal Trial Court in Cities to be stationed in Kagayan di Oro City by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1936, Creating four Additional Branches of the RTC in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in Kagayan di Oro City, Misamis Oriental by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1937, To Promote Investments in Agriculture by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1938, Prescribing the Strengthening of the National Agriculture and Fisheries Extension System to Accelerate Agriculture and Fisheries Development by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food and Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 1939, Amending Certain Sections of the Comprehensive Agrarian Reform Law of 1998 by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agrarian Reform.
House Bill 1940, Mandating the Philippine National Government to Immediately Plan and Implement the Construction of two Longspan Physical Interconnectivity Projects Connecting Sorsongon and Samar Provinces and Leyte and Surigao Provinces by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1941, Launching another Green Revolution Program in the Country by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1942, To Increase Farm Productivity by Reducing Land Fragmentation by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1943, Institutionalisating the Community Driven Development Approach as a National Strategy for Inclusive Growth and Social Protection by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 1944, Creating the National Agrarian Reform Adjudication Commission by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agrarian Reform.
House Bill 1945, Establishing the Barangay Tablon Northern Mindanao Medical Center Satellite District Hospital by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1946, To Regulate Pesticide Chemicals Residuing Food by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1947, Promoting and Supporting the Development of the Corn Industry by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1948, Prohibiting the Online Placing of Bets for Allotto Games by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 1949, Promoting Soil and Water Conservation for Sustainable Land Management and Improving Farm Productivity in the Country by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1950, To Provide a Housing Program for Teachers by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1951, Providing for three Small Farmers Representatives in the National Irrigation Administration Board by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1952, Providing for the Construction of a 240 Kilometer Trans-Mindanao Superhighway Connecting four Provincial Capitals in the Karaga and Northern Mindanao Regions to the Lagindingan International Airport by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1953, Re-Nationalizing the Itbayat District Hospital in Batanes by Representative Gatto.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1954, Providing Comprehensive Maternal Healthcare Including Immunization for Pregnant Women by Representative Gatto.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1955, Declaring Parcel of Land of the Public Domain in Itbud-Uyagan Batanes as Agricultural Land by Representative Gatto.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1956, Regulating the Practice of Audiology and Audiometry by Representative Gatto.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1957, Providing for a Philippine Medical Act by Representative Gatto.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1958, Declaring May 8 as the Public Land Transportation Workers' Day by Representative Gatto.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1959, Honoring Filipino PUV Drivers and Their Families, Establishing the Superhero Recognition Program by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1960, Providing for Comprehensive Accessible and Affordable Early Detection and Time Intervention for Children with Special Needs by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 1961, Repealing the Excise Tax on Field Provision of the Train Law by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1962, To Protect and Promote the Rights of Public Transportation Workers by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1963, Recognizing the Essential Role of Fathers in the Early Life of Children by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Labor and Employment and Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1964, Mandating the Establishment of Barangay Management Information System by Representative Garcia Maria Angela.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1965, Establishing the Clark National Food Hub by Representative Garcia Maria Angela.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1966, Providing for the Magna Carta of Barangay Health Workers by Representative Garcia Maria Angela.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1967, Mandating the Full Conversion and Maintenance of Roman Superhighway in Batanas an All-Weather Road by Representative Garcia Maria Angela.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 1968, Institutionalisating Active Transport by Representative Garcia Maria Angela.
Committee on Transportation and Committee on Sustainable Development and Goals.
House Bill 1969, To Transfer the Regulatory Authority over Vaporized Nicotine and Other Non-Nicotine Products from the DTI to the FDA by Representative Garcia Maria Angela.
Committee on Trade and Industry and Committee on Health.
House Bill 1970, Establishing a Voucher System for Poor and Academically Qualified Students of Private Higher Education Institutions and Private Technical Vocational Institutions by Representative Theodoro.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1971, Establishing the Private Basic Education Voucher Program by Representative Theodoro.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1972, Prescribing the Use of Neo-Ethnic Philippine Textiles in the Academic Regalia of All State and Local Universities and Colleges by Representative Theodoro.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1973, Providing for the Automatic Appropriation for Public Health Services by Representatives Tino and Corine Luis.
Committee on Appropriation.
House Bill 1974, Creating ten Additional Branches of the RTC and five Additional Branches of the METC in the National Capital Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Taguig, Metro Manila by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee Justice Committee.
House Bill 1975, Prohibiting Online Gambling by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 1976, Providing for the Creation of Centers for Elderly in Every City or Municipality Especially for the Service of the Elderly by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Senior Citizen.
House Bill 1977, Establishing the National Health Passport System by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 1978, Strengthening Primary Healthcare System by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1979, Institutionalisating the Use of Mobile Application Para Sa Pilipino in the Delivery of Basic Government Services and Programs by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 1980, Creating Barangay New Lower Bikutan in Taguig, Metro Manila by Representative Cruz Vicente.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1981, Institutionalisating Microfinance Programs and Access to Capital to Support and Grow Micro Enterprises by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Micro and Small and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 1982, Creating Barangay San Miguel in Taguig, Metro Manila by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1983, Providing for a Magna Carta of Tricycle Drivers and Operators by Representative Cruz Ricardo.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1984, Providing Stronger Measures for the Conservation and Protection of Wildlife Resources and Their Habitats by Representatives Villafuerte-Miguel Luis, Villafuerte-Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 1985, Providing Enhanced Protection, Security, and Benefits for Media Workers by Representatives Villafuerte-Miguel Luis, Villafuerte-Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1986, Strengthening the Special Program in Creative Arts for Junior and Senior High School by Representatives Villafuerte-Miguel Luis, Villafuerte-Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1987, Enhancing the Continuing Professional Development of Filipino Professionals as an Integral Component of Career Progression and Specialization Programs by Representatives Villafuerte-Miguel Luis, Villafuerte-Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1988, Providing Protection and Incentives to Freelance Workers by Representatives Villafuerte-Miguel Luis, Villafuerte-Vincenzo, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Redon.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 1989, Establishing a Rental Housing Subsidy Program for Informal Setler Families by Representatives Villafuerte-Miguel Luis, Villafuerte-Vincenzo, Renato Luigi. House Bill 1989, establishing a rental housing subsidy program for informal settler families by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1990, prescribing the guidelines for the establishment and operation of local universities and colleges by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1991, regulating the operation of motorcycles for hire by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 1992, institutionalizing the Dynamic Learning Program as an alternative instructional modality in the K-12 Basic Education Curriculum by Representative Suntay.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1993, expanding the power of LGUs to create indebtedness and to enter into credit and other financial transactions by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1994, institutionalizing the Higher Education Loan Program to be provided by the DPP and the Land Bank by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1995, establishing the Philippine Entrepreneur Academy by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1996, imposing excise tax on single-use plastic bags by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 1997, granting PWDs a job seeker's allowance by Representative Kuah.
Committee Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1998, creating a Banco Central Digital Peso as a medium of exchange or as money for use on all digital means by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 1999, granting universal social pension and introducing a tiered system of social pension for endangered senior citizens by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2000, regulating the use of treatment technology for municipal and hazardous wastes by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 2001, creating the Philippine Centers for Disease Prevention and Control by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2002, establishing the Philippine Health Security Council by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2003, providing for a 30-year national infrastructure program by Representative Kuah.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 2004, providing social security and additional benefits to all barangay officials and workers by Representative Santos Marc Anthony.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2005, establishing in Luzon, Governor Heniroso Davao Oriental, the Luzon Central Elementary School Special Education Center by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2006, establishing in Dawan Mati, Davao Oriental, the Dawan Central Elementary School Special Education Center by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2007, establishing in Makangao, Lupon, Davao Oriental, the Makangao Central Elementary School Special Education Center by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2008, establishing in Dahikan Mati, Davao Oriental, the Don Luis Rabat Senior Elementary School Special Education Center by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2009, creating in San Pedro Laguna, I barangay San Isidro by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2010, declaring May 8th of every year as a special non-working holiday in San Pedro Laguna to be known as Sampagita Day by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2011, establishing the Universal Child Care Support Program by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 2012, defining and prohibiting elder abuse by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2013, defining electronic violence against women and their children by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 2014, ensuring the fundamental equality of men and women under the laws on marriage and family relations by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 2015, declaring July 27th of every year as a special national non-working holiday in commemoration of the founding anniversary of Iglesia Ni Cristo in the Philippines by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2016, declaring the miraculous image of Jesus locally known as Lolo Uweng inside the Santo Sepulcro Parish in San Pedro Laguna, a national cultural treasure by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2017, constituting the City of San Pedro, Province of Laguna, as the lone legislative district of the City of San Pedro by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2018, amending the family code to provide for post-nolity spousal support in cases of marriage declared void under Article 36 by Representative Matibag.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2019, providing for its mandatory establishment and continued operation by Representative Aquino Magcaysay.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2020, providing for the regulation and accreditation of private for-profit residential care facilities or group homes for the elderly by Representative Aquino Magcaysay.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2021, establishing a center for autism in every province of the Philippines by Representative Adyong.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2022, providing for the establishment of retirement villages or communities by Representative Aquino Magcaysay.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2023, converting Sariyaya Quezon into a component city to be known as the City of Sariyaya by Representative Lopez.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2024, institutionalizing the intergenerational program for senior citizens and children as a multi-sectoral social development intervention by Representative Aquino Magcaysay.
Committee on Senior Citizens and the Committee of Welfare of Children.
House Bill 2025, providing for stiffer penalties on overloading of public utility vehicles and reckless driving resulting in homicide by Representative Bautista Lim.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 2026, establishing the Comprehensive Chemical Engineering Law by Representatives Matugas and Bagau.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 2027, providing all barangay officials a lump sum retirement pay given to one honorarium by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2028, strengthening the employment rights of members of the Citizen Armed Forces or the Reserve Force of the AFP by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 2029, strengthening the complementarity of public and private sectors in improving student choice and the delivery of quality and accessible education across all levels by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2030, extending the validity period of the Certificate of Registration and Professional Identification Card issued by the PRC by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 2031, providing for the Magna Carta of Waste Workers by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 2032, providing monthly maintenance medication support for senior citizens by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2033, establishing a PRC Service Center in Caban Canan Negroes Occidental by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 2034, separating the Florentino Galang Senior High School, National High School, Orong Anex in Orong Caban Canan Negroes Occidental from Florentino Galang Senior National High School, converting it into the Orong National High School by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2035, separating the Culipapa National High School, Sankey Anex in Sankey Hinubaan Negroes Occidental from Culipapa National High School, converting it into the Vicente Zibado National High School by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2036, institutionalizing the establishment of women and civil protection units in all government hospitals by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 2037, prohibiting political dynasties by Representative Risi.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2038, Foreign Heroes Scholarship for the Youth Act by Representative Kari.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2039, providing for a mandatory immunization program by Representative Kari.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2040, cancer screening, early detection, and prevention program for Filipinos in all government health facility station wide by Representative Kari.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2041, mandating the availability of antivenom vaccines in all hospitals by Representative Kari.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2042, CPR Training in Public Places Law by Representative Kari.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2043, Defibrillators in Public Places Act by Representative Kari.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2044, establishing a youth financial capability and literacy by Representative Kari.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2045, proposing establishment, recognition, and strengthening of the Coconut Research Center for the Visayas by Representative Kari.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2046, establishing a regular campus in Visayas State University in Hilongos Leyte by Representative Kari.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2047, reclassifying a parcel of land in public domain in Barrio Combi's Abuyog Leyte from timberland to illable and disposable land by Representative Kari.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 2048, granting reversal of social pension to senior citizens by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2049, establishing the Overseas Filipino Workers Hospital as a Level 3 hospital under direct supervision and control of the DOH by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2050, strengthening the competitiveness of the Philippine motor vehicle manufacturing industry by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 2051, renaming motor vehicle users' charge into motor vehicle road users' tax and increasing the rates for public vehicle modernization and road safety programs by Representatives Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Horebata, and Redon.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 2052, converting the Extension Office of the Regional LTFRB in Baybay City Leyte by Representative Kari.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 2053, declaring June 16th of every year as a special non-working holiday in Baybay Leyte in commemoration of its Charter Day by Representative Kari.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2054, establishing the City College of Orbak in Orbak Leyte by Representative Gomez.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2055, promoting investments in low-carbon economy by Representative Alba.
Committee on Climate Change.
House Bill 2056, mandating timely payment and settlement of guarantee letters issued by government agencies and offices covered by their respective medical assistance programs by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2057, amending the Social Reform and Poverty alleviation act by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 2058, requiring all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospital by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2059, amending expanded Soar Parents Welfare Act by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2060, creating the Department of Disaster Resilience by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Disaster Resilience and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 2061, establishing a Cancer Medicine Treatment Assistance Fund for indigent and underprivileged Filipinos by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2062, institutionalizing a national leasing program of private educational facilities for public school use by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2063, posting criminal liability on foreign employers and recruitment agencies who commit or enable acts of abuse, violence, or other grave offenses against overseas Filipino workers by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Overseas Workers and Affairs.
House Bill 2064, regulating the validity of licenses issued under Section 3B 3 and amending for the purpose the Local Government Code by Representative Duterte Harold James.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2065, creating the Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources by Representative Duterte Harold James.
Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries Resources, and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 2066, providing for the inclusion of fragile health and/or advanced age as grounds for the release of accused in a criminal case by Representatives Tino and Corinne Luis.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 2067, providing for a comprehensive and affordable framework for early detection and intervention services for children with special needs, instituting scholarship grants to establish special needs-related medical workforce by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 2068, providing scouted fees and charges to indigent job seekers and issuance of pre-employment documents issued by government agencies by Representative Nazal.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 2069, increasing the bed capacity of the East Avenue Medical Center in Dinamant Quezon City from 1,000 to 1,500 beds by Representative Suntay.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2070, providing for the revised Cooperative Code of the Philippines by Representative Klepa.
Committee on Cooperative Development.
House Bill 2071, regulating and modernizing the practice of medical technology in the Philippines by Representative Chua.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 2072, establishing the National Measurement Institute of the Philippines by Representatives Yu Joseph Kim and Yu Jason Victoria.
Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 2073, establishing the National Women Entrepreneurship Fund by Representative Po.
Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 2074, establishing a national information technology scholarship program with a mandatory public service commitment by Representative Po.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2075, establishing the Race Competition Index, providing for a national race prize monitoring platform by Representative Po.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2076, institutionalizing a national scholarship program for children and public transport drivers by Representative Po.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2077, restricting the use of BPO or call center operations for political propaganda and campaigning by Representative Po.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2078, creating one additional branch of the RTC in the National Judicial Region to be stationed in San Miguel San Boago del Sur by Representative Yu Jason Victoria.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 2079, providing for early voting by qualified senior citizens, PWDs, lawyers, and human resources for health in national and local elections by Representative Dalud.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2080, creating the Animal Welfare Bureau under the Department of Agriculture by Representative Plato.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2081, providing for the establishment and maintenance of a public veterinary clinic in every city and municipality by Representative Plato.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2082, increasing the bed capacity of the Drug Abuse Treatment and Rehabilitation Center in Ilagan, Isabela from 128 to 200 beds by Representative Albano.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2083, establishing a Level 1 General Hospital with a 10-bed capacity in Divilakan, Isabela to be known as the Divilakan General Hospital by Representative Albano.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2084, converting the Ilagan-Divilakan Provincial Road in the Province of Isabela International Road by Representative Albano.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 2085, converting the provincial road stretching from Abini-Pintor-Unyon-Gabu to Mangkuram-Lulutan-Ilagan, all of the Province of Isabela, into a national road by Representative Albano.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 2086, converting the provincial road stretching from Barangay San Pedro, Rojas-Barangay, San Juan, Kirino-Lulutan-Ilagan, all in the Province of Isabela into a national road by Representative Albano.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 2087, establishing a test of training and assessment center in Kabagan, Isabela by Representative Albano.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2088, declaring the Malasi Tree Park and Wild Daff Sanctuary in San Antonio-Kabagan, Isabela an ecotourism zone by Representative Albano.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 2089, declaring the immediate environs of the San Pablo Church in San Pablo, Isabela a tourism destination by Representative Albano.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 2090, declaring the immediate environs of the Saint Matthias Parish Church in Tumawini, Isabela as a tourism destination by Representative Albano.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 2091, amending Section 13 of the Anti-Graft and Corrupt Practices Act by Representative Albano.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2092, providing for standards for the practice of rehabilitation medicine by Representative Albano.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2093, allowing for single-party consensual recording in law enforcement by Representative Albano.
Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2094, regulating the operation of motorcycles for hire by Representative Albano.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 2095, instituting a national citizen service training program in all public and private tertiary educational institutions by Representative Albano.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2096, converting the Extension Office of the LTO House Bill 2096, converting the extension office of the LTO in Cabagan, Isabela into LTO District Office of Cabagan, Isabela, by Representative Albano.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 2097, exempting electricity sales from VAT, by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 2098, re-instituting mandatory credit allocation for micro, small, and medium enterprises, by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 2099, prohibiting any form of interference by national government agencies with the use of the national tax allotment and locally generated revenues of LGUs, by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 2100, promoting business growth and recovery by reducing the cost of business compliance for micro, small, and medium enterprises, by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 2101, establishing a framework for blue economy, by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 2102, to further strengthen local autonomy through a more rationalized system of decentralization, by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2103, establishing in Tigaoan, Camarino, Sur, the Tigaoan Mother and Child Specialty Center, by Representative Fuente Bello.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2104, institutionalizing climate anxiety and eco-grief preparedness and response programs in schools, communities, and public health services, by Representative Gonzalez-Alexandria.
To the Committee on Climate Change.
House Bill 2105, strengthening the conservation of natural historical landmarks, sites, and monuments, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2106, providing for an automatic adjustment mechanism in the teaching allowance granted to public school teachers, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 2107, providing for free annual medical checkup for Filipinos, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2108, granting free postgraduate education to public and private school teachers in state colleges and universities and local universities and colleges, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2109, establishing the indigency in the identification system, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 2110, mandating LGUs to provide pagibig benefits to their contractual employees under a job order, contract of service, or other similar contractual arrangement through a shared contribution scheme, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2111, establishing a socialized and localized housing loan restructuring and condonation program, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 2112, streamlining the process of issuance of permits, certifications, clearances, and licenses for housing and resettlement projects in disaster-affected areas, by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2113, providing for the delineation of specific forest limits of the public domain and for other purposes, by Representative Alba.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 2114, establishing a multipurpose fishery breeding farm and hatchery for the production and multiplication of crabs, shrimps, and milkfish in Balud Masbate, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 2115, declaring the Palani Beach in Balud Masbate as an ecotourism zone, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 2116, providing for the establishment of a blood station in Masbate Provincial Hospital, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2117, creating a mandatory department head position of Human Resource Management Officer in LGUs, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2118, creating one additional branch of the RTC in the Fifth Judicial Region to be stationed in San Pasqual Burias Island, Masbate, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 2119, establishing the Rodeo Center of Masbate, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2120, lowering the optional retirement age of government workers from 60 to 56 years, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Government, Enterprise, and Private Station.
House Bill 2121, providing all barangay officials with lumped retirement pay equivalent to one-year honorarium, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2122, establishing an onsite, in-city, near-city, or off-city local government resettlement program for informal settor families, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 2123, establishing a multipurpose fishery breeding farm and hatchery for the production and multiplication of crabs, shrimps, and milkfish in Mandaoon, Masbate, by Representatives Co. Elisa and Co. Antonio.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 2124, protecting senior citizens from violence, by Representative Ordanes.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2125, mandating LGUs to allocate 30% of their special education fund from real property tax collections for the provision of educational assistance to poor and deserving students, by Representative Ordanes.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2126, providing accessibility of senior citizens and PWDs to the built environment, transportation, information, and communications technology and other facilities that services open or provided to the public, by Representative Ordanes.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens and Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 2127, protecting women in state custody prescribing the minimum standards for their treatment, by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 2128, establishing the Disability Support Allowance Program, by Representative De Lima.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 2129, prohibiting online gambling in the Philippines, by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 2130, instituting a national land use policy, by Representative De Lima.
To Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 2131, defining and prohibiting political dynasties, by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2132, establishing the Philippine Blood Center and Services Network, by Representative Lagbas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2133, reclassifying three-wheeled motorcycles as non-conventional motorcycles, by Representative Lagbas.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 2134, providing for three-year specialization-focused college education, enhancing the employability of K-12 graduates, and authorizing the chat to allow flexibility and academic duration, by Representative Lagbas.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2135, establishing in Sogo, Southern Leyte, the Southern Leyte Regional Hospital, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2136, establishing a regular campus of the Southern Leyte State University in Lilawan, Southern Leyte, to be known as the SLSU Lilawan Campus, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2137, establishing in Hinungangan, Southern Leyte, the Hinungang Testa Training and Assessment Center, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2138, integrating the Pintuyan National Vocational High School in Pintuyan, Southern Leyte into the Southern Leyte State University System to be known as the SLSU Pintuyan Campus, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2139, instituting the Medical Reserve Course, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2140, expanding the number of disorders included in the newborn screening program, providing free screening service for indigents, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2141, providing for the modification of the public health emergency preparedness and response capabilities, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2142, allowing the DEEPED the flexibility to determine the pedagogical approaches to be implemented in the basic education curriculum of 2013, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2143, mandating the teaching of tax literacy, consciousness, and responsibility in intermediate, secondary, technical vocational and tertiary education, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2144, providing death, disability, and accident insurance coverage to barangay tanas, barangay health workers, barangay daycare workers, and members of Darupong Tagapamayapa, and increasing the insurance benefits of Sanggunean barangay members, by Representative Yap Christopherson.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2145, reverting to the national government the discharge of basic agricultural functions and responsibilities devolved to LGUs, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2146, providing for a revised flag and heraldic code of the Philippines, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus, Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2147, requiring the establishment of fully-equipped science laboratories in every public elementary and secondary school, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2148, strengthening the basis conversion and development authority, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Special Committee on Basis Conversion.
House Bill 2149, to enforce a constitutional right to the free exercise of religion by students of public schools, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2150, to subsidize school fees in all public elementary and high schools, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2151, amending the Credit Information Systems Act, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 2152, amending Section 17 of RA Number 8550, providing for the development, management, and conversion of the fisheries and aquatic resources, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 2153, declaring the importation and selling/distribution of bota as a criminal offense, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2154, amending Section 6 of the New Central Bank Act, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 2155, requiring the drawer of the check to allegedly print his/her name before signing the same, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 2156, amending Presidential Decree 194, authorizing aliens as well as associations, corporations, or partnerships owned in whole or in part by foreigners to engage in the rice and corn industry, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food and the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 2157, providing for security of tenure, code of conduct, and additional benefits to teachers, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2158, amending the magna carta of small farmers, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2159, amending Section 52 of the Agriculture and Fisheries Modernization Act of 1997, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2160, to enhance protection to municipal fishing and artisanal fisherfolks, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 2161, strengthening the conservation and protection of Philippine cultural heritage, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2162, amending RA Number 7743, providing for the establishment of congressional, city, and municipal libraries and barangay reading centers throughout the Philippines, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2163, banning the use of cyanide, dynamite, and all forms of illegal fishing techniques in the live fish trade in the Philippines, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 2164, providing for the legal framework and mechanisms for the creation, operation, administration, and coordination of the Philippine book publishing industry development center, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2165, to refer the Commission sa wika ang Filipino Commission on the Filipino Language into the Commission ng mga wika sa Filipinas Commission on Philippine Languages, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2166, decentralizing the textbook procurement program of the DEEPED, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2167, prohibiting the imposition of fees and charges on dormant accounts by the Representative Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 2168, establishing early learning programs for indigent pre-kindergarten children, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 2169, introducing educational reforms and supporting the planning and implementation of educational reforms in secondary institutions, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2170, to require certain disclosures in connection with any international money transfer, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 2171, providing for the magna carta for the advancement of agricultural workers' welfare, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2172, to declare as national heroes those who led the revolution against Spain and the United States in Mindanao, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2173, establishing the National Education Coordinating Council, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2174, institutionalizing the National Police Clearance System, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2175, creating the National Film Archive to be managed by the Film Development Council, by Representative Gomez.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Bill 2176, mandating law enforcement personnel to wear a body camera during law enforcement and special police operations, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2177, establishing the Ormooc City Lang Center, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2178, adjusting the total permanent physical disability benefit for members of the Philippine National Police, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2179, to mandate the DPWH to clear and utilize earth bowling machines per region in the conduct of road widening and other developmental projects, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 2180, renewing for another 25 years a franchise granted to Wave Network Incorporated under RA Number 8408, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 2181, establishing an agricultural information system in all cities and municipalities, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2182, establishing a testa training and assessment center in the city of Ormooc, Leyte, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2183, mandating the inclusion of a personal financial literacy course in the tech book education and training curriculum of tech book institutions and testa training centers, by Representative Alba.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2184, mandating the free transportation of relief goods by public and private freight and logistics companies in calamity-stricken areas during declared state of calamities, by Representative Nazan.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2186, institutionalizing the integration of artificial intelligence education into the elementary and secondary curriculum, by Representative Nazan. 2186. 86. 2186. 867. House Bill 2186, institutionalizing the integration of artificial intelligence education into the elementary and secondary curriculum, by Representative Nazan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2187, establishing one town, one tourist attraction program, by Representative Nazan.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 2188, transferring to the BJMP the management, supervision, and control provincial and subprovincial jails, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 2189, extending the coverage of the law on kidnapping and penalizing hoax kidnapping, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 2190, establishing the E-Guidance Counselor Program and Mental Health Specialization Scholarship Program, by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2191, establishing the National School Feeding Cloud Kitchen System, by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2192, institutionalizing a burial assistance program nationwide, by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 2193, institutionalizing a national government ethical hacking program and cybersecurity workforce development, by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 2194, mandating comprehensive and sustained voter education program, by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2195, protecting DRRM responders and volunteers acting in good faith during calamities and emergencies, by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2196, reducing food waste through food donations and food waste recycling, by Representative Poe.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 2197, changing the name of barangay 29 in Ormooc City, Leyte, to barangay north, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Numbers 2198 to 2200, merging certain barangays in Ormooc City, Leyte, and constituting them into distinct and independent barangays, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2201, establishing a national flood risk governance framework, by Representative Roman.
Session suspended.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we proceed, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Timothy Joseph Tim Kaiton of the Lone District of Nueva Viscaya. We have today Mayor Sandy M. Gayaton from the Municipality of Diadi, Nueva Viscaya, Everlyn Gayaton, Virhilio Benitez, and Ryan J. Liantada.
May we request the Honorable Mayor and the guests of the Honorable Kaiton to please rise. Welcome to the House of the People. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable John Jesnil Babayap of the First District of Bohol. We have today from barangay San Isidro, Tag Bilaran City, punong barangay Joseph Sagaral, kagawad Erlinda Tanong, kagawad Jessamie Budlong, kagawad Nestor Ugat, kagawad Emilio Simbahon, kagawad Macario Essin Junior, kagawad Fortunato Vistal, secretary Richie Sambas, treasurer Maria Shirley Simbahon from barangay Taloto, Tag Bilaran City. Barangay Captain Francis Eugene Zamora, kagawad Remedios Manlupig Nelson Tayag, Galikano Refulye, Juanita Bayog, Josue Lungog, Ronald Robante, Ann Margaret Barol, SK, Joel Gubot, barangay secretary, Cristina Gonzalez, barangay treasurer, Reynaldo Zamora Liga Staff from barangay Tiptip, Tag Bilaran City. Barangay Captain Heminador Lantape, kagawad George Tapah, Chito Mercado, June Tapah, Alexis Telmo, Rafael Cruz, Art Tapah, Annie Klimako, SK Chairman Mafe Klimako, secretary Heidi Saleh, treasurer Rowenda Cosmo from barangay Población Two, Tag Bilaran City, barangay captain June Ramon Duroy, kagawad Ralph Kabagnot and Mrs. Joy Kabagnot, kagawad Ritchie Felix Verano, secretary Arlo Camacho, kagawad Mark Paul Bolanyo. From the Municipality of Loon, Tito Sevilla Junior, Ruel Godinez, Rex Tevinagrasia, Paul Akain, Mario Sevilla, Glesserio Salomon, Elvin Cantones, Winston Paguara, Cesar Canillo, Lea Moscosa, Christine Tutor, Robert Lumongsod, Ronnie Ramada. From the Municipality of Tobigon, Kiber Kagampang, Dexter Kalunya, Roy Ladra, Lizel Henita, Annabel Caniete, and Ekit Lokweri. From the Municipality of Katibyan, Mayor Benji S. Oliva, Vice Mayor Esteban Angilan Junior, and the Sangguyan members Rolando M. Sarau, Rodrigo Dinorog Junior, Oliver Oliva, Reynald Laseya, Archimedes Peregrino Lungay, Noel Garzuta, Hernan Estavilla, Marcelino Rivero. We also have Josephine Kabugos, Justado Onor, Julito Babida, Dandan Mantahinay, Junar Aranas, Rochelle Primacio, Reggie Attoon, Yunis Andoy, Joselito Dabalos, Virginia Tunga, Dante Siros, Fernando Itable, Salustiano Candi, Marcos Buawi, Bertram Attoon, Ernesto Ponyo, Evelyn Veloso, Buenaventura Cosare, Aquilau Batausa, Teodulo Leornas, Edwin Lopez, Leo Sarpumones. And we have barangay chairman Fe Banol, Ramil Hemantiza, Ulysses Digaum, Joel Butal, Joselito Patak, Elorde Polbos, Gorgony Lupian, Ruel Haum, Gregorio Laroda Junior, Ramel Otom, Johnny Luzano, Leonso Alcano, Gerardo Godarido, Artemio Salposyal, Raymundo Kumamao, Rene Uli, Juliet Sarau, Feserico Gumapa, Alberto Hagunas Junior. We have SK chairpersons Jessiri Chaum, John Aurel Agon, Joshua Floyd Lucernas, Sean Oliver Okanya, John Pastor Perucho, Ian Kim Humandos, Robic Gonzaga, Kevin Silagan, John Dieter Torculas, Edeline Mae Aleria, Darwin Patak. From the Municipality of Albor, Mayor Don Richie Boates, Jacqueline Boates, Alan Tesorna, Nesho Gonzaga, Peter Manlangit, Nicolas Dagudog, Al Jerico Dumpol, and Jennifer Almedelia.
To the guests of the Honorable John Babayap, welcome to the House of the People. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon of the Lone District of Sarangani. We have today IBF Pan Pacific Super Flyweight Overthigh Boxer, Sarawut Thorok Thawornkam. Companias include Mr. Raymond Enrile, Mr. Marlon Ciason, and Mr. Jam Leonard Mangubat.
To the honorable champion and our guest in the House of Representatives, in behalf of Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes and our Majority Leader Sandro Marcos, welcome to the House of the People. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Minority Leader Marcelino Libanan.
The Honorable Nonno Libanan, the minority leader is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and our Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, on the part of the minority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Public Accounts as Chairperson Representative Terry Redon. And also, Madam Speaker, on the part of minority, I also move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Ethics and Privileges as Chairperson Representative Jonathan Clement Abalos II of the Four-Piece Partlist. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to elect the Honorable Terry Redon as Chairman of the Committee on Public Accounts and the Honorable JC Abalos, Chairman of the Committee on Ethics. Any objection? Hearing none, said members are hereby elected in the committee as mentioned.
And also, Madam Speaker, for the Committee on Rules, I move to elect the following as members of the Committee on Rules. The Honorable Edgar Erisi of the Second District of Caloocan City as Senior Deputy Minority Leader, Honorable Presley Disos of Ilrika Partlist as Deputy Minority Leader, Honorable Sergio de Gooc of APIC Partlist as Deputy Minority Leader, Honorable Arlin Bagao as of the Nagat Islands Lone District as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Stephen James Ton of the First District of Samar as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Laila M. Delima of the Mamamayang Liberal Partlist as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Percival Sin Danya of Akbayan Partlist as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Antonio Tenyo of AK Partlist as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Hisos Bung Sun Tay of the Fourth District of Kison City as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Journey Jet Nisai of Posong Pinoy Partlist as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Reynolds Michael Ton of the Second District of Samar as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Shelo Crisel Lagman of the First District of Albay as Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Christopher Shin Gonzalez of the Lone District of Eastern Samar as Assistant Minority Leader, the Honorable Rene Luis M. Co of the Kabataan Partlist as Assistant Minority Leader, Honorable Christopher James Ton as Assistant Minority Leader, Honorable Jose Manuel Jugno of the Akbayan Partlist as Assistant Minority Leader, the Honorable Roberto Gerard Nasal Junior of the Bagong Generacion Partlist as Assistant Minority Leader, the Honorable Nico Raoul Dasa of the First District of Northern Samar as Assistant Minority Leader, the Honorable John Rurik Padjernos of the Galing Pusso Partlist as Assistant Minority Leader, the Honorable Audrey K. Zuberry of the Third District of Bukidnon as Assistant Minority Leader, and the Honorable Iris Marie Montes of the 4K Partlist as Assistant Minority Leader. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion from the minority leader. Any objection? Hearing none, the members as mentioned by the Honorable Minority Leader are hereby elected to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Local Government as Chairperson Florencio T. Miraflores, to the Committee on Social Services as Chairperson Chino Miguel Almario, to the Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects as Chairperson Josea Arturo S. Garcia Junior, to the Special Committee on Globalization and WTO Christine Alexey B. Tutor, to the Special Committee on Nuclear Energy Mark Okuwanko, to the Special Committee on Strategic Intelligence as Chairperson Alexander T. Pimentel, to the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities Alfelito Alfel M. Bascog, and to the Special Committee on the West Philippine Sea Maria Angela S. Garcia. I so move.
Any objection? Hearing none, the members mentioned from by the Majority Leader are hereby elected as Chairman of the respective committees as mentioned. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Honorable Benvenido Benny M. Abante Jr. of the 6th District of Manila. We have the following from, we have Bible Mode officials and members: Pastor Joey Sauco; Pastor John D. Bakoko; Pastor Peter Cabriza; Pastor Bert Chan; Pastor Butch Tan; Pastor Ryan Borigas; Pastor Arnel Bon; Bishop Ray Escrupulo; Pastor Bong Escala; Pastor Robert Malit; Pastor June Ramirez; Pastor Rezel Kayanan; Pastor Romi Fadrikela; Pastor Ervi Castillo; Pastor Jedel Agron; Ms. Rhoda Allegre. And we also have the barangay chairman of the 6th District of Manila: Chairman Lito Eraskin; Chairman Marconi Catli; Chairman Dan Kalapano; Chairman Emmer Abiera; Chairman Bettinia Amante; Chairman Marisa Hintay; Chairman Matt Jordan; Chairman Jovia De Jesus; Chairman Ludwig Solano; Chairman Philip Manabat; Chairman Ampy Barameda; Chairman Lisa De Jesus; Chairman Elena De Fiesta; Chairman Rose Tupas; Chairman Suharto Bulleg; Chairman Geni Lising; Chairman Tess Sangil; Chairman Ray Chavez; Chairman Hermi Eronga; Chairman Evelyn Malyarri; Chairman Adrian de Luna; Chairman Marilyn Yicaro. And we also have other guests: Dr. Francis Alfaro, TUP Professor and Member of the Board of Regents; barangay kagawads of the 6th District of Manila; members of the Metropolitan Bible Baptist Ecclesia; district office staff and volunteers, Mr. Speaker.
To the guest of Honorable Benvenido Benny M. Abante Jr., welcome to the House of the People. Majority Leader.
We also have other guests, may we recognize the guests of Eduardo, Honorable Eduardo Roa Rama Jr. of the 2nd District of Cebu City. We have the following barangay officials from the barangay Bujisan of Cebu City: Chairman Gremar Barete; and counselors Ramil Rago; Honorable Nancy Gumpay; Honorable Glenn De La Peña; Honorable Edgardo Yap; Honorable Virgilio Tubba; Honorable Maria Luisa Moreno; Honorable Napoleon Abelgas; barangay secretary Nina Rabanon; barangay treasurer Joseph Salaum; barangay administrator Angelie Melendres, Mr. Speaker.
To the guest of Honorable Eduardo Roa Rama Jr., representative of the 2nd District of Cebu City, welcome to the House of the People. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to proceed with the additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
To the end of objection? Hearing none, the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions proceeding as well as communication and committee reports for... Please proceed.
House Bill 2201, Establishing a National Flood Risk Governance Framework, by Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2202, Creating a Performance-Based Flood Resilience Incentive and Investment Fund to Support LGUs in Reducing Flood Risk, by Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2203, Strengthening the Protection, Restoration, and Sustainable Management of Urban Wetlands, Coastal Flood Buffers, and Waterway Easements to Reduce Flood Risk, by Representative Roman.
The Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2204, Further Strengthening the Incentives for Private Sector Participation in Public Educational Institutions, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2205, Creating the Batang Magaling Councils, by Representative Recto.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2206, Creating a District Engineering Office in the 6th Legislative District of the Province of Patangas, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Public Works and IIs.
House Bill 2207, Enhancing the Overtime Pay for All Employees, by Representative Recto.
To the Committee on Vision Means.
House Bill 2208, Expanding the Purposes and Application of the Special Education Fund, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2209, Providing Healthcare Plan Coverage to Government Personnel, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 2210, Protecting the Human Identity by Conferring Economic Rights over their own image, voice, and likeness, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 2211, Requiring all public elementary and secondary schools to prepare and implement a ludip for the optimum utilization of its resources in addressing basic education facilities shortages, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2212, Instituting a Philippine National Autism Care Plan for the Support of Persons with Autism, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 2213, Establishing the Philippine Online Library, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2214, Authorizing the Concerned Registers of Deeds to Correct Certain Clerical or Typographical Errors in the Certificates of Title Without Need of a Judicial Order, by Representative Amante.
The Committee on Justice.
House Bill 2215, Declaring a Tax-Free All Interest Earned From Local Currency Bank Deposits and Qualified Investments in Long-Term Instruments Derived from Sources Within the Philippines Except Interest Income on Foreign Currency Deposits, by Representative Amante.
The Committee on Vision Means.
House Bill 2216, Creating the Department of Water Resources and the Water Regulatory Commission, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Disaster Resilience and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 2217, Providing for the Magna Carta of Barangay Health Workers, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2218, Imposing Excise Tax on Single-Use Plastic Bags, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Vision Means.
House Bill 2219, Providing the Magna Carta for Taxpayers, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Vision Means.
House Bill 2220, Establishing a National Energy Policy and Regulatory Framework for Facilities Utilizing Waste-to-Energy Technologies, by Representative Recto.
The Committee on Energy.
House Bill 2221, Granting Hazard Pay to All Juilli Appointed Barangay Tannod Members During Their Incumbency, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2222, Granting Incentives and Benefits to Barangay Health Workers and Barangay Nutrition Scholars, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2223, Establishing in Calamba City Laguna the Calamba City Science High School, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2224, Declaring April 21 of Every Year as a Special Non-Working Holiday in Calamba City Laguna in Commemoration of Its Cityhood Anniversary, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2225, Expanding the Coverage of the Mandatory Basic Immunization Program in Providing a System in the Determination of Other Types of Vaccine Preventable Diseases, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 2226, Strengthening the Human Organs and Tissue Donation and Transplantation Program, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2227, Establishing Greater Responsibility and Accountability from Private Employment Agencies, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 2228, Expanding the Prohibited Acts of Discrimination Against Women on Account of Sex, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 2229, Creating the Magna Carta of Barangay Nutrition Scholars, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2230, Instituting the Magna Carta for Child Development Workers, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 2231, Establishing Programs and Services for the Support of the Mental Health and Wellness of Solo Parents, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 2232, Establishing a Youth Agricultural Hub in Every Province and City, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2233, Establishing the Calamba City Testa Training and Assessment Center in Calamba City Laguna, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2234, Declaring F Mercado Street and J. Peter Zell Street in Calamba City Laguna as Historical and Cultural Zones, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2235, Creating a District Representative Peoples Advisory Council in Every District, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on People's Participation.
House Bill 2236, Establishing a Nursing Home for Abused, Abandoned, and Homeless Senior Citizens in Calamba City, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2237, Establishing the PUP Calamba Campus, Calamba City Laguna, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2238, Creating a Comprehensive Policy Enabling Youth Participation in Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention, by Representative Hernandez Cheriz Ann.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 2239, Providing for Free Annual Medical Checkup for Filipinos, by Representative Yamsuan.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 2240, Granting Maternity Benefits to Women Workers in the Informal Economy, by Representative Yamsuan.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 2241, Institutionalizing a National Employment Facilitation Service Network for PWDs and Senior Citizens, by Representative Yamsuan.
The Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities and the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2242, Granting Free Tuition for Government Employees enrolled in Graduate Education Masters Program at SUCs, by Representative Yamsuan.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2243, Requiring Business Establishments to Install CCTV Cameras in their Place of Business as a means to deter crime, by Representative Yamsuan.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2244, Modernizing the Crime Investigation Techniques of Law Enforcement Agencies, by Representative Yamsuan.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2245, Mandating the Inclusion of Professional or Doctor's Fees in the Final Hospitalization Bill of Public and Private Hospitals to Endangered Patients, by Representative Alba.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill Numbers 2246 and 2247, Converting the Provincial Roads from Certain Barangays in the Province of Bukidnon as National Roads, by Representative Alba.
The Committee on Public Order and Public Works and IIs.
House Bill 2248, Strengthening Animal Welfare Standards, by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2249, Strengthening Accountability for Cyber Crimes Perpetrated through the Use of Dummy or Fictitious Online Accounts, by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 2250, Establishing a Framework for Blue Economy, by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 2251, Providing Expanded Field Health Coverage and Cash Assistance for Filipino Farmers and Their Dependents During Periods of Illness or Recovery, by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 2252, Strengthening the Universal and Timey Civil Registration in the Philippines Through a Community-Based and Technology-Enabled Birth Registration System, by Representative Nazal.
The Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 2253, Establishing a Metro Manila-Wide Synchronized Drainage and Flood Control Master Plan, Mandating the Integration of Local and National Interventions into a Coordinated Framework, by Representative Janicio.
The Committee on Metro Manila Development.
House Bill 2254, Amending Section 324D of the Local Government Code of 1991, by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2255, Establishing a Legal Scholarship and Return Service Program, by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2256, Abolishing the Principle of Reserva Tronkal, by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2257, Repealing the Revised Penal Code on Death or Physical Injuries Inflicted Under Exceptional Circumstances, by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2258, According Equal Rights to Wives and Husbands in the Philippines by Amending the Revised Penal Code, by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2259, Amending the Anti-Fencing Law, by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2260, Amending the Coconut Farmers and Industry Trust Fund Act, by Representative Salceda.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 2261, Designating and Recognizing the 6th Legislative District of Quezon City as the Historical Banlat District of Quezon City, by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2262, Converting the Philippine Cancer Center as the National Cancer Research and Treatment Institute of the Philippines, by Representative Copilar. and Treatment Institute of the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 2263: Granting Civil Service Subprofessional Eligibility to Employees of the Government with at least five years of service and professional eligibility to Employees of the Government with at least ten years of service by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Stable Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 2264: Establishing Digital Public Libraries and Reading Centers by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2265: Digitizing all books necessary for primary and secondary public education and Establishing the Philippine Online Library by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2266: Establishing public basic education schools in geographically isolated and disadvantaged and conflict-affected areas by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2267: Establishing a Grant Program to Enhance Financial and Retirement Literacy for Midlife and Older Filipinos by Representative Vargas.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2268: Institutionalizing the Shared Service Facilities Project for MSMEs by Representative Vargas.
The Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 2269: Providing for the Magna Carta for Public Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Workers by Representative Vargas.
Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 2270: Requiring Financial Literacy as a Part of the Curriculum of Grade Schools and High Schools by Representative Vargas.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2271: Promoting Business Growth and Recovery by Reducing the Cost of Business Compliance for Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprises by Representative Vargas.
Committee on Vision Means.
House Bill 2272: Establishing a Rental Housing Subsidy Program for Informal Setler Families by Representative Vargas.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 2273: Establishing a Nursing Home for Homeless and Abandoned Senior Citizens in Every City or Municipality in the Philippines by Representative Vargas.
Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2274: Providing an Additional Ground for Canceling the Certificate of Candidacy of a Candidate and Making the Acts of Annuisance Candidate an Election Offense by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Separation and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2275: Amending the Family Code of the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2276: Amending RA Number 9369, authorizing the Commission on Elections to use an Automated Election System in the National or Local Elections and in Subsequent National and Local Electoral Exercises by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Separation and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2277: Declaring July 27 of every year a special national non-working holiday by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2278: Improving the Delivery of Socialized Housing Programs by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 2279: Strengthening the Legal Education Board by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2280: Mandating the Inclusion of Financial Literacy Education as a Course in the Elementary, Secondary, Tertiary, and Technical Vocational Education Curriculum in all Public and Private Schools, Colleges, and Universities by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture and Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2281: Establishing public basic education schools in geographically isolated and disadvantaged and conflict-affected areas by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2282: Declaring the Month of September of each year as the National Bullying Awareness and Prevention Month by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2283: Reclassifying Legitimate and Illegitimate Child into Marital and Non-Marital Child respectively by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 2284: Establishing a Framework for Blue Economy by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 2285: Institutionalizing the Career Progression System for Public School Teachers by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2286: Providing for the Redevelopment of Condominiums by Representative Copilar.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 2287: Providing for the Mandatory Installation of Dash Cam Systems in Vehicles Owned by the PNP by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 2288: Expanding the Cases Covered by DiKatarungang Pam barangay by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2289: Expanding the Scope of the Malasakit Program by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2290: Converting the Dr. Eva Makaraeg Makapagal National Center for Geriatric Health and Riti Jose Arias Memorial Medical Center as the National Center for Geriatric Health and Research Institute by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2291: Mandating the allocations of an area for Information and Communications Technology, Infrastructure, and Facilities in subdivisions and Housing Development Projects by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill Number 2292: Renaming Motor Vehicle User's Charge into Motor Vehicle Road User's Tax and Increasing the Rates for Public Utility Vehicle Modernization and Road Safety Programs by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Vision Means.
House Bill 2293: Allowing for Electronic Registration and Voting Overseas by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Separation and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2294: Creating the Department of Disaster Resilience by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 2295: Providing for Diaper-Changing Stations in All Major Establishments and Government Offices by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 2296: Mandating all graduating elementary, high school, and college students to plant trees as a prerequisite for graduation by Representative Copilar.
To the Special Committee on Reparation.
House Bill 2297: Promoting Philippine Indigenous and Traditional Writing Systems and Providing for their Protection, Preservation, and Conservation by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples.
House Bill 2298: Providing for the Conduct of National and Local Elections within the Premises of Shopping Malls by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Separation and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 2299: Establishing the Philippine Entrepreneurs Academy by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2300: Providing for Philippine Medical Act by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Stable Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2301: Establishing the Private Basic Education Voucher Program by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 2302: Creating the National Reproductive Health Research and Treatment Institute of the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2303: Granting Universal Social Pension to Senior Citizens by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 2304: Instituting the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement Team under the DOH by Representative Gato.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2305: Providing for the Magna Carta of Barangay Health Workers by Representative Gato.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2306: Right-Sizing the Number of Barangay Tanods by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 2307: Creating the National Teachers Hospital of the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2308: Establishing a Testa Training and Assessment Center in the Sixth Congressional District of Quezon City by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 2309: Establishing the Virology and Vaccine Institute of the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 2310: Providing for the Revised Warehouse Receipts Law of the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 2311: Integrating a Comprehensive Study of Philippine History during World War II into the Higher Education Curriculum by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1431: Defining the Rights and Fundamental Freedoms of Human Rights Defenders by Representative Delima.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 1432: Defining Extrajudicial Killing Providing for its Penalty by Representative Delima.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1433: Strengthening the Commission on Human Rights of the Philippines as the National Human Rights Institution by Representative Delima.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 1434: Promoting Inclusive Education, Entrepreneurship, and Employment for Sustainable Development among Pantawit Pamilyang Pilipino Program Adult Beneficiaries by Representative Delima.
To the Committee on Poverty Elevation.
House Bill 1435: Defining the Crime of Subordination of Subornation of Perjury by Representative Delima.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 1436: Establishing the Philippine Agricultural High School System by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1437: Promoting the Bamboo Industry in the Philippines by Creating the Philippine Bamboo Authority to be known as Bamboo Philippines by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1616: Establishing a System Protecting the Community Intellectual Rights of Indigenous Cultural Communities, Indigenous Peoples by Representative Dallo.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples.
House Bill 1617: Regulating the Registration, Licenseur, and Practice of Physical Therapy by Representative Dallo.
To the Committee on Stable Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 1618: Establishing Apex Hospitals in Every Region of the Country by Representative Dallo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 1619: Strengthening and Expanding the Field Health Consulta Package to Enforce Annual Physical Examinations, Diagnostic Screenings, and Improve Access to Preventive Healthcare and for Other Purposes by Representative Garcia Karen Hope.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 1620: Establishing a Basic Life Skills Course in the Senior High School Curriculum by Representative Garcia Karen Hope.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1621: Providing for the Sufficiency of Single Form of Identification for All Public and Private Transactions by Representative Garcia Karen Hope.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 1634: Protecting Filipino Consumers from Arbitrary Price Increases of LPG by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 1635: To Further Enhance Implementation of the Lifeline Rate Further Amending the AIPIRA by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 1636: Establishing a National Energy Policy and Regulatory Framework for Facilities Utilizing Waste-to-Energy Technologies by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 1637: Creating the Barangay Affairs and Development Commission by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 1638: Addressing Food Security Concerns by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 1639: Granting Free Tertiary Agricultural Education and Other Related Courses to All Dependent Children of Qualified Farmers, Farm Workers, or Fisher-Folks and Deserving Filipino Students by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 1640: Institutionalizing the Fertilizer and Pesticide Subsidy Program under the Department of Agriculture and Appropriating Funds Therefore by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 1641: Establishing the Overseas Filipino Worker Social Security and Retirement System and Appropriating Funds Therefore by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 1642: Examining Under Privilege and Homeless from the Required Payment of Super CDs Bond to Perfect and Appeal in Relation to Ejectment Cases filed Against Them by Representative Marcoleta.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 1643: Prohibiting the Operation of Past-Faced Online Specialty Forms of Gambling Providing Penalties Therefore and Other Purposes by Representatives Adyong, Ortega, Luis Tros, Sawan, Kong Hun, and Janisho.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 1644: Providing for Government Financial Institutions Unified Initiatives to Distressed Enterprises for Economic Recovery by Representatives Willy Fuerte Miguel Luis, Willy Fuerte Vincento, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 1645: Regulating the Use of Treatment Technology for Municipal and Hazardous Waste by Representatives Willy Fuerte Miguel Luis, Willy Fuerte Vincento, Renato Luigi, Ore Bata, and Redon.
To the Committee on Ecology.
Resolutions. House Resolution 45: Expressing Gratitude to the Members of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress for Voting to Expel Honolfo Arnie A. Teves Jr. for his Repeated Failure to Return to the Country to Face Serious Criminal Charges by Representative Degamo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 46: Urging the Appropriate House Committee to Conduct an Inquiry on the Unpaid Claims in Several Private Hospitals which Resulted in their Decision to Temporarily Suspend Accepting Guarantee Letters Under the MiFIP by Representative Delima.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 47: Urging the Leadership of the House to Create a Special Committee on Artificial Intelligence by Representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 48: Urging the Philippine Government to Impose Strictly Regulations on Online Gambling by Representative Redon.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Resolution 49: Urging the PRC to Establish a Service Center in Kataingan Masbate by Representative Co. Wilton.
To the Committee on Stable Service and Professional Regulation.
House Resolution 50: Commending the Honesty, Integrity, and Patriotic Conduct of the Local Fisher Folk of Pangasinan, Ilocos Norte, and Sambales for Voluntarily Surrendering Packs of Shabu Found Floating in Philippine Waters by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Resolution 51: Commending Alexandra Alex Ayala for her Outstanding Performance in the 2025 Eastbourne Open, Miami Open, and Wimbledon Championships by Representative Hernandez Cherysan.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 52: Commending and Congratulating the Filipinas, the Philippine Women's Football Team for Qualifying for the 2026 AFC Women's Asia Cup by Representative Hernandez Cherysan.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 53: Directing the Appropriate Committee to Conduct an Inquiry to the Abduction, Disappearance, and Supposed Killing of the Missing Sabongeros by Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 54: Directing the Appropriate Committees to Conduct an Investigation on the Anomalous and Fraudulent Transactions in the Release and Utilization of Funds under the auspices of the DSWD Region 10 by Representative Oma Minal.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 55: Directing the Appropriate Committees to Conduct an Investigation on the Anomalous Implementation of Barangay Health Station Projects under the auspices of DOH Region 10 by Representative Oma Minal.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 56: Urging the Committee on Public Accounts and Other Appropriate Committees to Conduct an Inquiry into the Necessity, Cost, and Environmental Impact of the Manila Bay Rehabilitation Program by Representative Redon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 57: Directing the Committee on Information and Communications Technology in Coordination with the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Welfare of Children to Conduct an Inquiry on the Risks, Challenges, and Policy Gaps related to the Use of Social Media by Children Under 16 Years of Age by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 58: Urging Concerned Government Agencies to Enhance Rehabilitation and Protection of the Mount Makiling Forest Reserve and its Buffer Zone by Representative Hernandez Cherysan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Resolution 59: Congratulating and Commending 8-Division World Boxing Champion Manny Pacquiao for his Exemplary Performance in His Fights Against Mario Barrios by Representative Libanan.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 60: Commending and Honoring Manny Pacquiao for his Exceptional Performance in his Recent Boxing Match Against Mario Barrios by Representative Garbin.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 61: Urging the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and Other Appropriate Committees to Conduct an Inquiry into the Implementation of the Free Higher Education Law by Representative Redon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 62: Congratulating and Commending Alexandra Ayala for her Runner-Up Finish in the 2025 Lexus Eastbourne Open by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 63: Congratulating and Commending Maria Lea Carmen Imutan Salonga for her Intuition in the Hollywood Walk of Fame Class of 2026 by Representative Gomez.
Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 64: Urging the Committee on Games and Amusements to Conduct an Investigation on Illegal, Irregular, and Indesirable Practices Associated with Online Gambling Platforms by Representative Hernandez Ferdinand.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 65: Urging the DPWH and the LTO to Jointly Form a Task Force that would Implement the Use of Weighing Scales for Trucks Entering Public Roads in the 4th District of Leyte by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Resolution 66: Directing the Appropriate Committee to Conduct an Inquiry on the Proliferation of Deep Fakes by Representative Rekto.
To the Committee on Rules. Join the leader. Session suspended. Session resume. Join the leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no more business left for the day, I move to adjourn session until August 4, Monday at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
There's a move to adjourn? August 4, Monday at 2:00 p.m. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.